Thank Eric publicly, as well as Sarah Wolf, the outgoing chair. Last meeting was her last meeting. So beyond that, I think the next item we've got on our agenda is consent agenda. And you had circulated some minutes, Pam.
Yeah, and I just want to let everybody know for the record, we had a little technical difficulty with the recording. Apparently, we have fit our max savings space in the cloud, but we've just moved it to the desktop and it is, we are back to recording. So there will be a glitch at the beginning.
So on the consent agenda, Pam, I think you had, I know we had vouchers as well as.
You've had these minutes for a couple of packets, but I don't know that we've closed the loop on them. So it's two, 215. I can't access the 215 even with the link you sent today. I went to it and I could access all the other ones, but I wasn't able to access 215. Might have just been me.
Trying to think, so I looked at minutes myself. Couldn't get there. Anybody else have issues or that?
You can postpone it if you're not up to speed on them and we can put it on the agenda again for next time. I know Gail has been doing a lot of meetings and is working to get caught up because she does a lot off the recordings. So we will probably have a big batch coming our way to close out the year. As we get them, we post the drafts up to the, to our page, but obviously this one isn't working. Did you try any of the others?
Yeah, the other two, the January ones I was able to get.
Okay.
But 215.
We'll get that fixed.
Pam, I don't think I got a link to those, but I have to abstain anyway, so it doesn't matter that I didn't see them.
And the set of minutes that I had received, and have we voted on the 216? You had circulated those on May 2nd.
Yeah, they've been in previous packets, but you would not necessarily have remembered that. So Teresa inquired, I sent a link. It sounds like we're not really, we probably should take it up again next time when it's fresh for everybody unless people can recall.
Yeah.
What they're voting on.
It might be good, I guess, just for the next one, given the transitions, to even have these, a list of what the minutes are going forward.
Yeah. Where we're at.
Okay. In terms of vouchers, I believe there was a voucher this one.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, there were.
1053 through 1059.
So can I have a motion to, would be, do we accept the warrants?
Yep.
In the, the sub bullet point about the legal services, it says, we're on track to end fiscal year 22 well below the 25. Which marks the third straight year plus in line with our 25 to 26 K standard budget, which is also consistent with our historical trend. Is the historical trend to be well below that or is that budgeted number the historical trend?
The number is in line with the trend.
Got it.
Only brought it up because we had a short period where it was kind of popped up a little bit for a couple of years. And since then, it's really been pretty consistent.
Got it. That was my only question. Thank you.
Okay. So I was gonna say, so let's go on, all in favor of accepting or approving the voucher? Say aye.
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 Both. We have Eric. Do I need to do any special roll call? Everybody present approved, and we have Jake virtual, so.
No, you're all set.
All right, that's there. So I don't think we have anything else on the consent agenda, so we'll move on to subcommittee reports. So first one up is elementary facilities. I don't know, I see the, Teresa or Chris?
Sure, I can take it in general. You know, we don't have, we didn't need specifically over the past two weeks since our last meeting or week maybe since our last meeting we can have. So not a whole lot need to report, except that, and you know, Avi, keep me honest here, I don't think Jason's on, but I do believe that all the repairs have been completed on both the Highland and Brook Street field. So that is good news. Other than that, I don't believe there's anything else for our subcommittee to report. So unless there's any questions about that or any further detail that's needed, I think we're good.
I know there was a, there was a question about the state of the Essex Elementary Playground. Like the grass and kind of that, has there been progress?
We addressed that at the last meeting, right before Essex Town meeting.
Yep. Beautiful. Thank you.
So the only, if it's okay, the only, I mean, what Chris said is exactly spot on with the maintenance having been completed. Quick reminder for those who are listening or here, that included at Brook Street, replacing two sections in front of the goals, high use sections that had been down and were higher on the impact testing. They were subsequently tested after the repairs were done. They're well below the threshold now, so mission accomplished there. And on Highland Field, about 1,200 linear feet of line replacement, which is great, based on the recommendations from Gail, who's the design firm. And that's going to carry us through not only the season, but the fall as well. And come the opening of spring, we can, we'll make sure as part of our routine maintenance to also do a quick impact testing, see if any additional repairs are needed for the opening of the spring season. But I think the point is that this repair, which will probably be in $30,000 realm all in, is going to carry us over a little bit. And on that note, I just wanted to provide a quick update on the design services process. We had a standard kind of meeting for kicking off with Gail associates on the design process, where they started to introduce some of the timeline with us. And so this will probably be news too for some of the subcommittee members, but nothing really surprising. But they're working on getting the process rolling for a timeline that would have design complete with bidding, potentially in November with an award in January, so that we can kind of get on that, on the list of projects that could be scheduled for the summer, based on their understanding of supply chain. So that's good. As we know, we have a funding hurdle to kind of address. And we did discuss with them the fact that, you know, we would want to make sure that while we want the design process to move forward, like we've talked about, we need any contract or bidding process, which might be in the winter, to also acknowledge the fact that there might be a subsequent funding decision. We may not be able to execute that decision. And from what we heard, that that's not terribly uncommon, especially in the municipal space. And I think knowing that there are two fields that we're dealing with, I think certainly helps us in that regard, because I think it becomes a more attractive project. We could still potentially have one done in one summer and another one done in the subsequent summer, but put them out to bid. So just like a phased project like we had for Memorial. So it, we're starting to see with, working with them, they really know how to execute a lot of the things that we need to execute, so we can keep our options open the way we want to. And so it's just another great benefit of having a really experienced firm. The only other thing I just want to point out that's really important is, you know, because they're getting started now on the preliminary steps of design, very simple things like going and doing tests of the current conditions and undersurface and all that. We're proceeding with the assumption that we're doing a replacement of turf for turf. And it may be, you know, what kind of turf gets spec will depend a little bit on their work. But we're certainly not revisiting at this point the question of should we be moving to alternative surfaces? I don't think I've heard any comments in any session where that would be the case. But I want, make sure that the school committee is aware of that, because if that is something that you feel you'd want to have time to review, it probably would take us off our timeline unless we were meeting straight through the summer, which we know we are. Because we have one meeting in June and then in the summer, I think the schedule is a little up in the air, which means we wouldn't be until really the fall. And I think at that point, it would be too late to make a dramatic change in direction and still hit the summer target. So I just want to throw that out there. If there's any comments or questions about that, we could certainly, we have them working for us now, so we can certainly go back to them. So let me leave it with that for now. Ask if there are any questions.
So I have a quick question. So with the fact that we probably won't know if we can move forward funding wise until, you know, the next two town meetings in 2023, would that impact us being on that schedule? To still deliver a project in the summer of '23? Or does that be like, can we get on the schedule?
Yeah.
Without, I don't know, a pause or something?
Yeah, that's right. So what they've told us is that a notice to award with a contract term that would include subsequent, what is the, not subsequent, but pending approval of funding is certainly not preferred, but definitely not uncommon and can be done. So I think the answer is yes, we can accomplish that.
Good.
So I would, my request would be maybe if we could have a subcommittee meeting to learn a little bit about the history of why turf was chosen in the first place and, and get some of the background on this and where the community stands and what the involvement was, because we weren't here for that. That conversation has come up a couple of times in the Essex rounds of things that we've been doing before Essex Town meeting. And so at a minimum, I know it'd be helpful for me to be able to defend that decision and get that background. So if we could start with a subcommittee meeting about that and then go from there, would that be reasonable?
Whatever you want, it's no problem. I, one thing I can tell you is that I did ask them, just knowing that we're not the only community that goes through these decisions. And some of the questions you hear can be similar in other communities. I asked them what types of information they have or can share around issues of turf versus grass, which comes up a lot. And the main difference is availability and uptime. And also total cost of maintenance and repair, which can be quite high with irrigation, et cetera. But, and also just at some point, we'll be talking about infill and that kind of thing. And so they said, yes, we have all those materials. So I think the first thing I can do is ask them to send us what they have.
Yep.
I'd be happy to share it with the subcommittee. And then if you would like to have a meeting or set that up, they have offered to be available to answer any questions. I'm sure they will be happy to take a call.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I'd love to get that information, but also in particular to learn from the district perspective what the history on this was.
We weren't here for that.
I know. So as much as we can figure out.
We can probably check in with the old SBC to see if they can share any of what the thinking was at the time, because this came in as part of the building project.
Yep.
And maybe even just put in, maybe there's some notes or some minutes about what the discussion was to see if we can't find out what the original thinking was.
That's what I mean.
From what I remember, and I, because I've asked about this just a little bit, like when I first moved to town. And from what I remember, it was exactly as you said, RV, that probably, that it's, you know, time and playability, right? And then cost and maintenance, it's simply less expensive, so.
Yeah, those are generally the two things.
Those are the two main reasons.
But they'll have more complete information that will be helpful. So if you get people who have extra questions, you'll have extra info.
That's what I need.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
And one other suggestion, because I won't be around for it, but if it, I think this is the first time that we're going to actually be doing a replacement. So they're going to be removing the old one. I think probably there's 20 pounds of the granules that are in my house somewhere that my kids have brought home. But it would be good just to kind of go through what that looks like. Because I remember when the coach field one went in, there was a, the wrong granules put down and there was a delay with removing and all sorts of, so.
Yes, we did, I did give them that bit of history, as well as a little bit of the information about the permitting process that we went through, as well as updating them on the funding structure that we have for Brook Street Field and our regional agreement. So all of that is out there. And, you know, I think on the funding side with Brook Street Field, we certainly have a little more time to get into that, because that's, could be, that could be a fall conversation. I think on the design side, we really need to keep, let them keep their work going, because we know how energized people are understandably about getting this project moving.
Yeah. Yeah, actually, and when you mentioned about permitting, that would just be something good to share in the intervening decade and a half. If there's been any changes, because the Brook Street Field is close to the creek there in the Wedlands.
Yeah, it was a big part of the last conversation with Brook Street and we have some of that information. And we did give them a brief summary. Absolutely. Will be an important topic.
We do have two people who have probably expert knowledge of the usage of the field. If you have any questions for them, they're sitting in the seats over there. So Tricia Pulley-See, the principal, and Kami Molinier are A.D. I don't know if they're experts on infill, but.
I think we can all agree that use is important, but it's the.
But you're looking at the history of how they decided on this type of a field versus another.
Yeah, because what happens is people come to us with questions and thought, well, when this happened and I was part and I was listening, I, I have a hard time, because I would, I don't know. And so it's helpful to get as much as I can.
Or even things like multi-sport strifing or where the placement of features on the field.
Yeah.
So that was in fact, one of their early questions. And Jason and Kami and I were in a meeting today and Jason and Kami were starting to share opinions. So we're going to absolutely need to have Kami and Tricia and Jason working heavily on that. I'm kind of more in the planning process and the money side, but once it gets into programming, I will gladly step to the side.
But I'm sensing from this conversation that what we want to know is the history of how we got here. At this point, we're not really going to depart necessarily from what we have. I think the biggest concern would be that we take a sharp left turn and decide we want grass, which is a whole other project than what we're planning for now.
And I don't see any reason to do that, but I want to make sure that I'm able to defend that decision with actual numbers and information. Yeah.
We can do that.
Yep. And especially hearing you speak about, the only other thing is just terms that lease out was put in, because the field, I think, was put in by the town and then was transferred to the district. I'm not sure.
We built it, came through the building.
Yeah, we built it.
Good. So I think that covers elementary facility, it's in school building committee.
Thanks. And we need to update that for the next round, because it really should just be the facility subcommittee at this point.
Yeah.
Yeah. So moving on to finance committee, is there, I know we've had a approved budget from the town of Essex since our last meeting. But Matt or Teresa?
I can speak to that. So yep, we had our town meeting. The budget did pass with a 79.4% approval, which was wonderful, especially given that there had been organized opposition to this. Couple points to note, so with a roughly 80% approval from both towns, that 20% voting against for very different reasons. My understanding of Manchester Town Meeting was that there was considerable concern about cuts. And the Essex Town Meeting, there was considerable concern about cost. And so listening very carefully at the candidates forum, you know, we have our work cut out for us, not only to bring two towns to some sort of understanding. Once again, it seems like we're kind of back at the drawing board, which is okay. We passed the budget for this year and we're back at, at come to understanding again, moving forward. But we're also going to have a few new committee members who need to understand the nuances of having two towns in, in partnership with our district, so.
I can just share if it's okay. The takeaway is education around what the budget problem is. And what, what causes the need for cuts. It's not a, you know, I think some people are perceiving it's a bookkeeping issue or an accounting issue, when it's really a resources availability issue. So that was my big walk away, that, them thinking, okay, as we plan for next year, we need to maybe back off this. We spent a lot of time on spreadsheets, but spreadsheets aren't telling the story of what the real problem is.
And I think a lot of.
And I think you nailed it with the, the two different perspectives on how to solve the problem.
There was, there was interesting at the Manchester Town Meeting, is just to think about like, about like the dissenting votes. Like, it almost was phrased like, if I vote yes, I'm voting for cuts.
Right.
Which was an interesting kind of, it's like, like in terms of messaging, like that's, that was. So I hope that we didn't get more no votes because of that, because obviously.
Well, we probably, I mean, town meeting is where you make your voice heard for a lot of people. And so I can understand that, but I agree that, that education is really going to be key, but it's going to have to start here with a very green group. And, and also I think that what we learned last year through working through these issues with Essex is going to serve us well, very well in the year ahead. So that's my finance committee update.
I would just caution, it's interesting that it's, it's sometimes not so, it's easy to, oh, this is town A and town B. But some of the comments I had heard, I'd heard both comment, both kinds of comments from groups in both towns. So they're representative of what people are concerned about, whether it's cuts or.
Yep.
And the education, the only thing I would add is the education process begins in December and then the fall. And while people can speak up at town meeting, if there's a desire to influence and change early, it's the best.
I think it, it starts tonight with.
Yeah. Just with, anyone that's interested.
Once we have our election, that's the beginning.
Yeah. So, excellent. Thank you for the, and there, is there another finance committee or another collaborative?
We should have one in the next week or two for a debrief and setup of what we can accomplish over the summer.
Yeah. Should we wait until we have reorg?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, okay.
We did, we got a big jumpstart last summer and had, I would say, two or three sessions. End of July, beginning of August, just to think ahead and plan out when we might do some education sessions. So I think it's very useful when we don't have other deadlines that we're trying to process through that group to kind of take a year, take a look at the year ahead and plot something out.
And I do know there have been some changes on the finance committees as well, so they'll probably be getting the school committee who have been home and selectmen members up to speed possibly.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so that's finance committee. Policy committee, Erica Kate?
I didn't have a, a policy committee update. I see Avi has food service contract update here.
This doesn't, I put it out there so we can get a check in and see where we're at.
Oh, okay.
The check in is just that it's, it needs to go out like any day. It just has been a little bit tied up with other things that have been kind of on the business office plate, to be perfectly honest, which so. But we, you know, it probably will be out for a week, so I'm not sure that it would, we would be able to have something to vote on at the June 7th meeting. So that's just one thing to keep in mind, although we do need to get a contract executed. So once we figure out what we're dealing with schedule, we can figure out how we can keep the school committee informed. Either way, I do feel that, you know, regardless of what the outcome of the bidding process is, I think we've learned a lot from the, the survey process. And I think we know that any, any firm in this industry can execute what we want. I think part of what we're going to need to figure out is what do we want in terms of what does that cost? What do we want to pay for? How much do we want to invest? And where that fits in with the, with the budgeting process and also what our priorities are. So I think those things can proceed regardless of the bid. But I just wanted to give you guys a sense of that timeline, since it will impact school committee's schedule.
Great. Thank you.
I think when the reorg does happen in the policy committee, there are a couple of topics, Pam, that you've, you've brought up that note, we should probably just run through policy committee.
How did you know, know that I was noting though, I have it on my pad here. One thing that did come up during, during the election process is the logo. And I was talking to Kami about that today, which is we have several logos. But I don't think we have any official copyrighted or trademarked logo. So we're not in a great position to exercise authority over it, to my knowledge. So we might want to put through policy subcommittee in the new year, just at the establishment of an official logo. And I think Kami has some great ideas about how to develop it as a brand and come up with a really tight package, which I think it's been something that's been hanging around for years. So that's why there hasn't really been any action on the sign. I just, I don't think we are in a, in a position to challenge, the hornet is out there on all kinds of things. So that's something on our to-do list. I'd like us to take a look at the 12-month employee policy. We know that we're going to be doing the teacher contract. After that, we're supposed to be working on the TA contract. For 10 months employees and 12-month employees, we have just a one or two pager that exists in our policy manual that kind of governs their holidays, their longevity, their sick time. And it's probably worth taking a peek at that and making sure that it's current and that their longevity is appropriately, appropriately sized compared to what we've done to the teachers' contracts. I feel like we've gone through a couple of iterations of the teachers' contract, but we haven't gone back to the 12 months. So I think we just want to make sure that that matches. And then we do have to bring up, as I'm seeing Angela out of the corner of my eye. I know we have a nondiscrimination language, simple update, like we get something from MASC that the feds have updated something. So that is kind of just a quick revision. Was there something else that I had?
No, you covered, you covered more than what I remembered. So, okay.
Well, I had the hornet facing me as I came up to the meeting, so that reminded me.
We're not into name, image, likeness things yet, are we? All right. So and negotiation team, no updates there. I think we do have a next meeting scheduled tentatively for early June, and that's waiting upon reorganization.
June 8 and June 15 are our two pre-scheduled days.
Wait. What time are those again?
I believe we're starting at 3:45.
I think those, that's the extent of the subcommittee reports we have. So and next on the agenda is the superintendent's report, Pam, which I see you are.
So I have nothing substantive and I can run through it, or we could jump into some of the curriculum issues and I could follow them, just because I know their timeline.
Yes, yeah.
Their days start much earlier. So if, mine is just kind of spring activities, reminder of COVID protocols. So it's kind of just.
Let's circle back.
Loose ends and then a conversation about the calendar.
So. Topics on the agenda tonight for that are high school program updates up first? Is that fair? Okay. I think we are. We're watching, watching the AV team. Oh, or should we do the, okay.
Do you want me to go later or stay here?
Come on.
Come on.
We'd love to have you close.
Before I start with this, I'd just like to acknowledge the two concerns of the high school that were spoken about earlier in the meeting concerning our math department and teacher absences. And I want the committee and the community to understand, I'm fully aware of the concerns of the community around those two issues. In terms of math, I do want to give a kind of a congratulations or a shout out to some teachers who have really stepped up to support math programming in the high school during this year, taking on added course load. And that includes Keith Gray, it includes Courtney Brown, Steve Cogger, Jim U Millie, Barrett Houston and Josh, Barrett Alston, sorry, and Josh Wodkowski. I'm in trouble, I'm not used to being in person. And secondly, I'd like to talk about the substitute situation at the high school. Several years ago, prior to COVID, there has, there has been a substitute teacher shortage forever. The high school decided that we would kind of take the hit on that and allow the substitute teachers to gravitate more to the younger children in the elementary school and the middle school. And we opted to hire a TA to work in the auditorium, knowing that our students are older, more mature, that teachers are able to post on Google Classroom and for students to complete work. Should we see a change in the status of a number of substitute teachers available to us, we certainly would welcome them back to the high school. But at this time, we feel it's more necessary for them to be with our younger students as opposed to our more independent kids. And I'm happy to take feedback on that if there's a, if there's something like a.
I'll offer a little extra color on where we were struggling in elementary is, there's a substitute shortage in general on the North Shore. And substitutes, when given a choice of assignments, I think the preference is to a high school level and not in elementary or not necessarily a more intensive classroom environment. So if you remove some of the more desirable pick options, it at least forces more people to have to opt for, if they want to work, the options that we do have available at the elementary level. So it's not a perfect system. I know we had studied what some other districts were doing and this was a, a solution we had seen implemented in other buildings. I don't think it was ever intended to create high volume absenteeism. It was meant to be cost effective and incentivizing people to take open positions where you needed more hands-on care and support.
What is our per diem for subs?
We actually raised it this year, we're $100 a day.
105.
105?
Yeah.
Why?
So is that sort of just an unintended outcome then, that now we have neither subs at high school nor elementary?
I don't have any data to support it, but I don't think it's an outcome of anything we're doing. I think it's an issue of scarcity of people available to do so. Because we are not the only district suffering through teacher absenteeism. It's hit the national, hit the national news. I have not been to a regional conference this year or a local roundtable where we're not, you know, head in hand, trying to figure out what are you doing? How are you doing it? You know, are you managing FMLAs and LEAVE? So the discussion about teacher burnout, the generalized discussion is true. People are fatigued and even in consult with our attorneys, you know, again, this isn't excuse making, it's trying to understand the problem. That the benefits laws are on the sides of the individuals who can access and justify their need to be absent. So what I can say, the principals are all good partners in this, is that people are put through their paces and documentation is provided and people have produced legitimate reasons for why they are out for extended periods of time. So there's a little bit of people's hands being tied. And I would say frustration on all levels. I think there's legal frustration, because when people are out, it falls to other individuals in the building to pick up the slack. I know the principals are frustrated. They share. And I'm frustrated, because I don't know what we can do more than we're doing to support them. And I, if it was $200 a day, I think we'd go there. But $200 a day for no one that is there to come in is.
Right.
You can't, the 200 won't produce another body.
Have we crunched the numbers for hiring a permanent sub?
We de facto have some, to be honest with you. So we have different TAs in the building who we held over from COVID and, you know, jump in, Allison, because yours is an even higher level of need and sometimes greater scarcity for kids with. and sometimes greater scarcity for kids with special needs. Holdover from COVID, we did have some additional TAs that didn't necessarily have a direct assignment at the beginning of the year but are here and available on a daily basis to fill in. I think the number that we would, I mean, we can't have twenty TAs.
Right.
Ready to go. And I think we probably fluctuate between nine and twenty out in a given week district-wide. So if you're looking at a s- an overall um faculty and staff of over two hundred, about, you know, five to ten percent. Which is, which feels smaller when you when you state it as a percentage, but ha- has a great impact. Yeah. Sure, please do.
That the applications for all positions are down, just to highlight that. It's not just substitutes. Substitute is one of the lower paying roles. Uh and we have just found it's very, very difficult to hire teaching assistants. There have been extended periods of time when we've been seeking teaching assistants for openings. And while we do, we're a sought-after district and we have applications for teacher positions, they're just much lower than they have been in the past. But I do see it around teaching assistants as well. It's not just.
Mm-hmm. But we're cutting.
We just cut teachers.
Teachers assistance.
Right.
And in all fairness, we're gonna do another assessment in the next two weeks to see if there's more. So teachers' teaching assistants are annual appointments. And we typically, by the time we close the school year, issue letters that we intend to bring you back. So um I think I just saw another bulletin pop in my box, the latest assessment of of who, you know, what the headcount is for next year.
So just as a reminder, because I've had some questions from people, members of the public, wondering how those people are identified. Is that up to the building principal? Once it, once we say, oh, there's, you know, we have two TAs in this building, we might be able to do without. Does that go back to the principal?
I would say that it typically follows enrollment in the service provision to a child. So if a child is at fifth grade and is coming to middle school, the individual that that person's tasked with, uh individual who is the caretaker to that student may be the person that's reduced.
Mm-hmm.
Is that fair to say, Allison? Cause you or you may be reassigned?
Yeah, it's entirely enrollment driven and driven by student IP. So the principal is always involved and aware. Um and we do make, just once, if the enrollment is shrinking and we're cutting teaching assistants, that would be performance and assignment related and expertise related.
So could could I either suggest or ask that um whether or not this is worth a separate conversation? Cause I know that I have questions about whether or not this is, you know, kind of a school committee level issue or, you know, it's clearly a budget implication. To what extent is it, you know, kind of a personnel issue for administration? And I personally, I'd like to to have some time to think about it. Uh it sounds like there's certainly some substantive in- issues here that we're probably not gonna resolve today. I appreciate the update, um but it'd be great if we could have a a planned conversation about this if it's appropriate.
That makes sense. Thank you. I think that does make sense. It's come up, I know it's come up, and I appreciate there's it's it's worth, like with many things, it's worth getting just out on the table and understanding perspective on it.
So give me a little guidance on what.
I think also my my question um for Allison and you is, so when we're talking about TAs who may or may not be cut next year, are we talking specifically about special ed TAs? Or are we talking about, because I know there's been confusion at the finance committee level also about what the role of a TA is in the building?
The overwhelming majority, I would say ninety percent of our TAs are special education TAs with direct assignments of small group or individuals.
Oh, I totally agree.
We have a small handful of TAs that are general ed, four for pre- four for four for K. And then in our, I I think I know where you're going. In our intervention reorganization, we have eliminated as part of that restructuring some fractional point for TA positions um that were providing instructional services so that we can move to qualified teachers providing those instructional services. So with the removal of those positions, we are probably down to, I'm thinking, four to six general TAs district-wide.
I think Jake's.
Don't quote me on that number. I can look it up for you. But I would say to Jake's question, TAs are a fluid situation that are student hire-based unless there's some larger program. So we will not know the total headcount on TAs until August. We'll know the total headcount exiting the year based on our population. But through work that's done over the summer, students entering, exiting, we can readjust, we may readjust again.
So would it make sense like a superintendent's report, like in August, to have an update on that?
On staffing? Sure.
Yeah.
I I think it'd be extra valuable just as things are melding together, just as a suggestion. Because the TAs we talked about, they're gonna be having a contract in place or there. We spent a bit of time talking about making resources available. This has been an issue. It's like, don't, I have jokingly referred to my head as the teacher apocalypse, where it's just hard, very hard to find qualified talent. And in some areas, it sounds like we're, you know, we're hard to get, but it's gonna take resources in the form of money. And that's a school committee roles to provide the resources for the education for that. So it'd be good possibly to get that out there, cause it's gonna queue up and flow into so many other issues. Just to understand, you know, what are, what may be solutions, if it's financial, if it's a different structure, to be able to cover the substitute.
I have an answer for that, but it's not one that anyone, we're just, we're gonna have to do. Fewer people are gonna end up having to do more unless there's a broader correction in.
That's and that's where I think this is gonna circulate back to. We can say, yes, let's offer more. Yes, let's try to have more of a pool. But that comes out of the budget that we are scraping at the bottom of reserves now.
And in that way, this is absolutely a school committee discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, because when we talk about level services, it's any losses from the level. And if this is, we're talking about being able to fill the gaps in what we anticipate, so.
That was a lovely introduction, you.
My role as an educator.
No, I appreciate it because it's something, it's something that has come up in conversation that people bring to their school committee reps that they're comfortable talking to, and it happens repeatedly. And so it's important, so thank you.
No, I appreciate you having the conversation and also gave me time to realize my glasses were on my head and I wasn't able to read the names without. So I feel far, far more prepared right now. Um so I get to talk about our year-end curricular activities. And actually, this is something I'm pretty excited about, um just because it is kind of our first dip in the toe, uh our first toe dip into the water after the development of the strategic plan. And it's something that as a high school, in terms of student center and experi- experiential um learning that we've been talking about for a long number of years and just trying to push that needle forward. And I think we've made some big jumps recently. Um this year, we started by really defining what we're talking about. We talk about student-centered learning, and I think that's kind of the starting point. And then I can talk about some of the other pieces we went through during the year. Um we want students to reflect on their learning and skill development. We want teachers to do address the distinct needs and interests, aspirations, cultural backgrounds of individual students. Um students need to have the opportunity to make choices about their learning and contribute to the design of their learning experience. And learning needs to be connected to real-world issues, problems, and applications. That's a definition we talk about every single time we meet as a faculty. We review it, we remind each other, and we say that this is what we believe is best for kids. Um so with that, a few things have happened this year. And I'm gonna gonna try to just bullet point them, cause I know we're short on time. Uh we did have the development of the strategic plan. We have created a school improvement plan that will be presented to you um in the in the fall. But we're very excited about it. We did a lot of work on it during the course of this year. Um we had a NIASC decennial visit in November. Um so NIASC is the accrediting agency for um high schools. And they came in in November. They were here three years ago for a collaborative con- conference visit. And then they came back again in November. Um they had a lot of positive things to say about us. But one place they're pushing us on is interdisciplinary opportunities for kids. Um we don't have their final report yet, which is unbelievable to me. But um we will have it sometime this summer, they assure me. Um we also have done some work with Michael Eitman um around what we believe, um our belief around culture, diversity, equity um and inclusion in classrooms. And we've been really tying that work to our definition of student-centered learning. So um we met with Michael and as a faculty, we talked about the need to really undervi- understand each individual student. What is their background? What are their cultural beliefs? What um are their needs? What are their aspirations? So really getting to know each individual student. And uh faculty members have each made a commitment that we review each time we meet in terms of what they've done to get, take a step forward in knowing each of their students. Um the second session, we talked about what teachers bring in terms of their own culture, their own values, beliefs into the classroom and how that may impact their interactions with students. And so we've made commitments about trying to recognize what some of those things are and how it might impact our interaction with students and how we can constantly improve those interactions. So um kind of bringing all those things together in our work on student-centered learning and project-based learning over the past several years. Um we've been trying to reorganize the idea of final exams. We did away with midterm exams in two thousand seventeen in order to bring back time for teaching and learning. We felt that half-days of ninety-minute tests were outdated. Um so we have full days of school during that week, and we just continue the school day as um as would be typical. Um this, the last two years, we haven't had final exams. So we thought that this was a great opportunity for us to kind of rethink what we do. So each department was tasked with come up with something, you know? Do you really believe there's a test that's necessary in your content area? And so for some, yeah, and they could defend that. Um where others felt as though they could do more um applicable activities, um having students either um collaborating, discussing, and really trying to meet those benchmarks of the vision of the graduate that we worked to develop and implement over the last few years. So um a few things are gonna be going on this year that are different than in the past. Um score is gonna be different. Um so every high school senior um takes part in an internship from um the, from the all of fourth quarter, which this year was beginning August, I mean, sorry, April eighth, I'm just wishful thinking. Um which, April eighth, they've all been out of the building, working on their internships. Um and in the past, we had them come in and present to just a three-panel um faculty about their experience and about um what they did and what they learned from it. But we felt as though that should be broader for the community. So we're doing it more as a um kind of a fair. There'll be three days, there'll be forty students during each day located here in the Learning Commons um where community members, um underclassmen, which we think is very important, um can come in and faculty members can come in and talk to the students about their experience. And they'll be able to talk about um what it was that they did and what it was they learned from them and how they used what they learned here at MRHS in those, in that internship. Ultimately, our goal is to tie that experience to the skills of the vision of the graduate once we have introduced those skills more deeply with the students. Um so it's a change, and we'll see how it goes. If it goes great, awesome. And if it, there's things we need to do better, we certainly will reflect on it and do that. Um and then during our final, what would be our final exam week, um we're having full days of school from Monday through Thursday. Usually, all of those days would be half-days, again with just ninety-minute exams. Um and we feel as though there's a lot of lost time there for teaching and learning and for really moving forward what we believe is important in education. Um so each department has kind of come up with a, maybe a different way of looking at things. So um in the English department, they're doing writing and um reflection and conversations. And when we look at the vision of the graduate, they're focusing on effective communication and critical thinking skills during that week. Um in social studies, the students um in grade nine will be viewing Schindler's List, followed by a number of Socratic seminars following during the course of that week. In grade eleven, they'll be doing a civic, they're doing a civic action project. Um and in grade ten, they're doing research-based presentations. And again, for the vision of the graduate, they're hitting the marks of empathetic global citizen, critical thinking, and in some respects, um collaboration. In um the arts, they're going to be spending their ninety-minute blocks to um putting up pieces of art and walking around and doing student critiques and talking about the art and what they see in the um each other's art and what could, what is wonderful about it and maybe what students might have been di- done different. Um and again, that's innovation and creativity. World language, um they have always done a performance-based um assessment. They do reading, writing, culture, um and speaking. And during exam week, they'll be doing their speaking um speaking assessment where two students speak to one another while two teachers kind of assess their use of grammar and language in the target language. And what we found is that type of assessment is what's leading to our high performance and the seal of biliteracy for our students senior year. Um in math and science, um we're really excited about the grade-nine project. So um the grade-nine teachers really like jumped at this opportunity and they're doing a interdisciplinary uh project with math and science um where the students have been tasked with coming up with a problem or an investigation of um something they've learned in science along with something they've learned in math. So the kids can come up with anything that they they're thinking. And one example that was given me to me today was um student is really interested in how the shape of a hull of a boat, the angles of the boat impacts the way the boat is able to move through the water. Um so he's going to be using math and science along with the three-D printers and the STEM um STEM lab to create a project around that. Another student is um wondering about the effect of acid rain on the germination of seeds in our current area here. Um so there's a a broad range. They can do individual projects or group projects. They have time in class during the last two weeks of school. Um and then they will be doing a presentation fair again here in the Learning Commons on Friday, the seventeenth, between ten and eleven fifteen, and the community is invited to attend. We just asked, you remember, it's the first time we've done this, so we'll see how it goes. So we're really excited about it. The teachers are just thrilled, and it hits so many of the targets of the vision of the graduate. Um the rest of the science and technology department are doing a mix of exams and projects. And the math department for grades ten and eleven will be doing culminating exams cause they really feel it's important to have an understanding of where kids are in terms of the foundational skills moving forward to the next level of math. Um so as a result of that, we've created this completely different schedule for the last week of school. That is a um kind of a mix of the ninety-minute, the ninety-five-minute blocks, do these presentations or tests. Um but you'll see that each block following that ninety-five minute block has a twenty-eight-minute block. And that's where kids are going to be asked to really reflect on their learning for the year. They're going to fill out a Google form that kind of says, okay, this is what I did this year. What's my goal for next year? And then there's going to be department-created questions as well with the idea of moving that information forward to next year's teacher so that prior to the start of the school year, there's already personalization of education beginning. So we'll be expanding that in the years to come, but that's it. Cause I had a lot I want, I could talk forever about this topic, so.
That's really awesome. That aligns with when we did the strategic plan, about more authentic learning experiences and community engagement. That's gonna be, that's really neat to see what what comes.
We're excited. It's a, it's a dip. Okay, it's one of them. We're just dipping our toe in. Uh but we're gonna go full force in the next few years. I think um you'll see a big transformation at high school.
In this quick aside, in the context of K twelve, we wanna remember that the high school was the leader on the strategic plan, right? So they started the NIAS process a couple of years before COVID.
Right.
And we're, and worked on the vision of the graduate, which we then leveraged into some guiding work for the strategic plan. So they've been at this for a little while. Um that's not to say other schools aren't getting up to speed, but they're well positioned to lead on this. And I just wanted to kind of add that to the conversation.
Now you have a question?
Yeah.
Is it, is it graded? So like, can can you fail?
Yeah.
This?
You can tell.
The fail?
Yeah, you can just not do it. Um.
I'm kind of like related to like final exams.
So we, yeah, so like, we don't wanna just worry about. Yeah, so like we don't want to just worry about, you know, a fifty or a twenty or a ninety. We really want students to be reflecting on what they did learn and showing that. But yes, there are grades tied to the work that the students are doing. We're not that transformational just yet.
I like the kind of like reflection at the end of a school career element of it too, because often, I, for instance, I work with a lot of interns and we often try and end with a, you know what, take your last month and write your, here's my summary of what I did, especially. So as you go on to your next thing, you've got that self-awareness of what you would do differently and what you've learned.
So preview to our strategic pla, our, our school improvement plan, we'll be implementing portfolios, nine, three-twelve, and that kind of reflection at those key points, particularly during this week in future years, will, will be a big part of that.
Oftentimes, when, when people come at us, where, I'll keep this as an I statement. When people come to me with concerns or complaints in particular, it's, you know, we had all this time and energy through COVID and we didn't even keep any of that. This is an awesome example of something that we had to adapt because of the COVID situation and that you can take and move forward with. And it's just a prime example of it, so thank you.
Thank you, yes. And this is something I'm really proud.
Yeah.
This has been the faculty all year long, really, their beliefs about teaching and learning and how they want to change. We watched the Jetsons and talked about how nineteen sixty-three, somebody thought about all the things that were in the Jetsons, but none of those things existed. Let's do that with education and they're really all in on that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for the energy.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Trish. I very much appreciate the, the energy and the, the scale of it, right? To have this happening across departments, right, is, is a pretty unique and an excellent first step towards the broader work you're doing. Thank you.
All right, Kimmy. Athletics, so hi, everyone. I just want to introduce myself really quickly because this is my first school committee meeting. I'm Kimmy Molinar, the athletic director. It's really nice to meet you all and I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to work in such an amazing community. The first year has been, but almost, so thank you. All of you were sent our coaches handbook and athletic handbook. The athletic handbook is pretty much the same straightforward as it has been in years past. The major change is heading into the upcoming year is that we are planning to reinstate softball as a Manchester Essex sport due to increased participation numbers and interest in the sport. So we're really excited. It will no longer be a cooperative team with Hamilton when, um, next year. Yeah, so it'll be varsity only and it will be available for eighth graders to trial, depending on the registration numbers in the spring, but we're really excited to bring it back. Another thing we'll talk about a little bit later will be the possibility of recognizing cheer as an official high school sport. I do have a proposal prepared and I will distribute that to you all. Another update is that swimming and diving will be varsity only heading into next year. The Cal does not offer JV heats and we felt that our JV swimmers, which were our middle school swimmers, were at a disadvantage. So now we're going to apply for middle-level waiver, which would allow our middle school swimmers to compete at the varsity level and be able to be eligible throughout the tournament as well. Another change that was omitted from the handbook that you all received is that indoor track will stay available for seventh and eighth graders. We will not be opening it up to sixth graders again. We just believe that since it is a high school sport and they are competing against eighteen-year-olds, yes, juniors, seniors, and high school, because it is high school sport. It just is more age-appropriate for seventh and eighth graders compared to sixth grade and developmentally. The rationale just behind why there are so few opportunities for sixth and seventh-grade students in particular is just that we have a lot of youth opportunities within the town that are great. And then something that we decided to add, knowing that we do not have a lot of middle school participation within our athletics programs here, is the strength and conditioning program. So we open that up to middle school students, grade six through eight. It's available six weeks at a time in the winter and the spring. And it has been received very well by our middle school students. Participation is maxed out, our capacity is maxed out every single session that we've offered. It's been thirty students each, which has been phenomenal feedback, so we'll definitely keep that going. Any questions about the handbook? Another thing that I developed for this upcoming year is the Coach's Information Guide. So this is something that, I don't know if we've ever had one in the past, but new coaches are coming in and they have a lot of questions about how we do things within the district. And I felt a comprehensive guide that was clear, answered a lot of their questions that I was getting throughout the year, and it also provided consistent, clear communication on policies and decision-making for our coaches. So they could just refer to the guide, know exactly how to handle different situations with parents, players, and myself, and make consistent decisions along those lines. I am looking for approval to distribute this Coach's Handbook to our coaches. So if you all could approve that today, that would be great. Any questions about the Coach's Guide in here?
What did you use as a basis, since it is kind of brand-new? Did you just talk to the people and come up? Did you take one from somewhere else to sort of use as a base?
Yeah, so I took one from other athletic departments. So a lot of athletic departments in the area, especially our colleagues, have Coach's Guides. So I took bits and pieces and pieced-meled one together that fit the needs of our coaches and our community.
Did you have any, any current coaches input before putting it, okay?
It's less so about they knew that this guide was coming, more so they had questions that were always asked and I made sure to address those in here so they could just go right back to it and know exactly what the answer will be and how to handle it.
And apologies for having skin, but it's primarily guidance. It isn't, here's a whole new set of policies.
Yes.
This is an easy.
Yep, it's all consistent with what has been done, yep.
And Jake had asked a great question in response to the materials going out, like, what do we vote on and what don't we vote on? And this is, I would call it an informal vote of support. Whereas the school handbooks, which specifically have school committee policy and have disciplinary outcomes, is a formal vote of support because we might have to enact something. So I think over the years, our tradition has been to bring ideas and new things that we're putting forward to this group, so we, you're knowledgeable of them and we can garner support and we can move forward as a team. So just, things will probably be taken aside to do some learning as we go, as new people come on board, so. Just an FYI. But I think they're both fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Thank you, thank you for the middle school focus as well.
Absolutely. So the other piece is the new high school sport proposal for cheerleading, so I will pass this around.
I didn't realize that that's really, it's not.
Not our sport.
Yes, so for those of you who are unfamiliar with the cheerleading program right now, it is run through the town, Mark's Recreation. So our cheerleaders are not recognized as an official high school sport. And because of that, they are unable to compete with the M I A and the M S A A. So in order to compete, we would have to recognize them. The major goals are just high, maintaining our high participation numbers. They have a team of twenty-five. They opened it up to sophomores, I believe, just this past year. And our students are thrilled, they love it, and they are eager to make it a high school sport because they do desire that opportunity to compete. We also want to establish and maintain a great relationship with the Junior Hornets and create a pipeline of an opportunity for those athletes, if that is their main fall sport, to continue to compete at the high school level within our school community and just overall pride within our community, especially at our football events and having this cheerleading program be a sport as well. So they would, if they became a high school sport, be under M I A and M S A A regulations. They'd be under the K P A N League regulations, so they'd be under the school policies and procedures that we have within our athlete handbook. The impact financially is very minimal. They are self-funded right now. They have a lot of fundraising that goes in and they do have leftover funds from this past year that would cover a lot of the outstanding first one-time expenses heading into the fall of twenty twenty-two. The only major impact would be transportation and the coaching stipends.
Say, can you bump it up to seven mats and capitalize it?
So I'm sorry, so just on the end here, are you suggesting that that, that plus forty-four thirty would come from the revolving fund?
That is the additional money going into the revolving fund if we were to make it a high school sport. Because now all these cheerleaders are paying the user fees, the normal high school student thing.
Got it, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there a way to share the, or show the document that you're looking at? Because clearly this has a fiscal implication here. Is this something we're being asked to vote on? I'm not clear what we are voting or?
This one is under the formal vote category. So if you need time to consider, we can always bring it up again on the sixth. But because we're going to be, we're starting a new program. So new programs should be approved by the school committee and it ties to budget and resources. Typically, I mean, Kami did a great job organizing this. She's actually, within the domain of the athletics budget, finding a path forward. So it's basically a neutral impact on our overall operational budget. They're not seeking that we allocate something from another line or increase our budget to cover it. But why it should be approved by this group is all new athletic teams have historically been approved and we haven't had a hiatus on any new programs since I arrived. Cheerleading came before this group, I want to say, almost seven years ago, requesting to be added. It was on the heels of, on the ad of the ski team. And I think there was just some dissatisfaction, not even dissatisfaction. The way the ski team came on board, people didn't love the process. They started as an independent group. They said they would fundraise, fundraising dried up. We had a bunch of kids very invested and of course, we picked it up. So I think at the time, people felt like, well, there really wasn't a decision involved. I would say that these people went through their paces. It's gone through a formal process and this is the natural next step. So I think process is there. Enrollment's down, so I think the overall expenditures of the athletics department have reduced a bit because during, you can help me out with this. I know that when we had high enrollment, some of our, our sports required additional coaching just to manage the volume of kids. Some of those numbers have gone down. So it seems like a just-right time to do it if the committee can support it.
I think in some ways, and I know, much like we talked earlier about the fields, fields and athletic participation in teams are two areas that folks are very passionate about. So I think it is fair because there are budget implications as well as the, oh, it's an official, there's an implication that with officially recognized sports, the fundraising needs sometimes goes down. It might be, I guess all I'm saying is it might be good to visit this next time or in a future meeting and just, it's good, it's there. To Jake's point as well as to two new people coming on the committee, I think it'd be fair to have them consider, because we usually try not to jump into, hey, here's something before us. You know, it was a pretty clear couple vote that night, but again, this has got some financial implications, so.
And, and just as a point of clarification, as the new person here, you're, we're being asked to vote on something that we haven't, it wasn't on the agenda and wasn't, we weren't prepared for. And I'm not, I'm not saying one way or the other that this is a good or bad thing. I'm just asking process-wise, is this, is this the kind of thing that was just so timely that it didn't have a chance to, we didn't preview that, we didn't know that it was coming?
Yeah, so Kami did bring the, the outline tonight. So typically what we've done in the past is unless it's an emergency, which this is not, we can take a beat, introduce it tonight, leave you with the materials for review and come back and do a formal vote on the seventh of June.
Which is going to be a very, very full meeting. So would it be possible for us to ask a couple of questions tonight since we're here doing this?
And that's totally, totally your comfort level.
If it's questions or things, let's, let's get them.
Jake, can you see the page now on the screen? I can't.
I'm still seeing the high school schedule.
Twenty-five years ago, twenty-six years ago, when I graduated from high school, varsity cheerleading thing was like we were a varsity sport at Hamilton when. What, are there any other schools in the area that, for which this isn't a sport? I mean, how does, how are we comparing for?
We are one of the only that I'm aware of that do not have cheerleading as an official high school sport. All the other schools within the K P A N League have a cheerleading program.
Okay, this is not out of line with anything that is happening in the area. I didn't even realize that this was the case. That's wild.
We haven't had cheerleading since long before I arrived here over time.
And the one thing, just, and again, I'm, I'm lazily putting everything, okay, on the new agenda. It might be good even, and I'm sure it's, it's in there, but a, here's the sports that we do have and where there are. Because it seems like every year there's, we're going to cut back in this area and add on in, in other areas and that's good, but because I think there's a natural ebb and flow, just to put some, make yourselves.
Yep.
Jake, I've also forwarded the email to you as I struggle to minimize the twelve screens I have open. Well, that's not sure.
I don't see anything coming in yet. So my questions, so, so clearly, I think you've conveyed this as budget-neutral, but is that, it sounded like that's because there's an excess of funds that they've had from fundraising in the past. So is that, is that kind of a expectation that will change over time? In other words, if that, if they use those excess funds, will they then need additional funding going forward? And I am, I am a little bit, I think somebody mentioned it already, the kind of perception of adding things. And again, I'm, overall, I'm in support of this, right? I think that's, it's, I was a little surprised that it wasn't there either. But as, as we have these conversations about things being reduced and here we are adding sports. And, you know, I think there's, to me, there's still a question about the kind of middle school offerings. I appreciate the strength and conditioning offering being opened up. And, you know, that, that's not a competition, right? That's, that's a way to get kids involved. You know, I, I think, I'd appreciate a kind of a broader picture of, of the sports program in order to contextualize this decision.
I don't mind jumping in on this one. Pre-COVID and post-athletic task force. Our intent was to do a follow-up study on specifically middle school sports and activities. Depending on your school of thought, there should be no competitive sports at the middle school level in a true middle school model. We have a history of being a seven-twelve model in a combined facility, which allows us to draw on students at the, at the middle school to round out our high school teams. So Jake, I, it's a long way of saying there's some history here, but you're right. But it needs to focus on a middle school conversation, not a high school athletics conversation, because I think that's the problem we're trying to solve, is what should a middle school activities program look like to be robust enough for those students? Because I think the seven-twelve competitive interscholastic piece has a whole different set of rules to be governed by it. And as soon as the high school population grows, automatically, middle school students will be released from, pushed out of the program.
And maybe that was part of my, you know, as I read the, the student handbook, part of my dissonance with that was that the first sections were about kind of inclusion of everybody and no matter their ability level, but then much of what we're talking about in the competitive realm is that selective approach. And maybe that is at play in that language and that conversation in the future might help me with that.
I would recommend if we can get, once we get some of our bigger issues settled, if we can kind of sort out the difference between middle school athletics program and high school athletics program. It's, it's a long, it's a long-term set of confusions.
Okay, appreciate the context.
How do you get to the differential number? I can't get the number.
Oh.
I can't get the math.
So I didn't include the general fund. I only subtracted from the revolving fund, the estimated income from the additional user fees from the revolving fund expenses. So that is where that differential came.
So the eleven-five minus the seven, seventy, seventy?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm going to recommend we table this for now. Avi can pick the tires with Kami on the numbers and have a recommendation for us on the budget. And any other questions you have as you review it? And we'll just, I think it can be a quick vote on the sixth, either an up or down.
Yep, yeah, I don't want to send the message that we don't support it. I think that we overwhelmingly do, so thank you for your hard work on it.
And as part of claiming our, our bigger budget conversation next year, I think part of the issue is going to be the revolving fund, the funds from athletics, which is generated by fees, is not something that can, is going to find its way back into the operational to support required programming. So it's just more food for thought on how do we explain our problem and how we arrive at certain cuts? And what's a, what came up the other night? What's a true program reduction versus an enrollment-based reduction where we're taking something away, but we're not really creating any reduction in service?
So whatever you recommend, if you want to recommend to table this, I also would just hope that we're not going to let this one thing get lost in a, we need to have a much bigger presentation kind of thing. Because if, I mean, I, I'm trying to understand what's the difference between voting now and voting June seventh? Where are we, what are we getting?
My thinking in recommending that we table it now, give you time to read, review, and digest the budget, is that you can understand the proposal before you, on the fly. It would some time for consideration. We vote specifically on high school cheerleading.
But, okay.
For next. For next meeting in that we look to next year. If it even fits in our, in our big picture for next year, um, at what should middle school sports be? Because we need Joanne Mayno.
Right.
And, and Kim Provost here to kind of talk about what that philosophy should look like.
And at our next meeting, we're going to have to change people. So are we going to ensure that they have this to come prepared, ready to vote too?
Yes.
I just don't want us to.
Yep. It can go in the pack because we'll know by tomorrow.
Okay.
That's great. And just answer the question.
Sorry, sorry.
Just answer the question about the fundraising and those one-time expenses. They would be a one-time purchase. So the additional uniforms and the mats would be one-time. And then the only real expense they would have is transportation, the competition fee and their coaching stipends.
Great. Um, in the meantime, it might be helpful or powerful for the committee if any of the students who are involved wanted to submit
Absolutely.
A letter or make a public comment.
I wouldn't necessarily feel obligated, but it's always, we always.
We love hearing from students.
Absolutely.
Never missed a chance.
And the only other thing that, that pops to my mind is consideration that as we pursue our equity work and our inclusion work, that does cheerleading have to be confined to just football? And an old construct of the girls cheering on the boys, or can it be expanded or it's a, a cheerleading squad that supports?
This does, this doesn't designate football. This could be applied.
The second page.
Well, I think what's important about this is that this allows them to be there, be a team that is able to compete against other schools themselves.
Yeah.
Um, and yes, as more as a sport.
And they're working towards something other than just cheering on the boys playing football.
Yeah. And they can also incubate other teams to learn how to cheer and support there.
Oh, do we need that?
I don't know. There can be helpful. There are many teams.
Now, we're great.
Thank you very much.
Did want to vote. It was the other time.
Um, just acceptance of the handbooks.
Yeah.
We should move, that's just a vote in support for the handbooks. So, um, I was gonna say, does anybody want to move to?
Supported the handbook?
Support of the handbook, second.
Second.
Okay. So that was Harrington, you know, Harrington moved for second. Um, I'll ask any further discussion? Okay. All in favor? Hi, hi.
Hi.
Jake, any opposed? Alright, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just want to say Kami's been an unbelievable addition to our athletic department and the school as a whole, middle and high school. And we're really just pleased at everything she's doing with us. So.
Thank you.
And a great budget manager, by the way.
Yeah.
And I'll be understudied. There we go. So onto the entry.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Thanks for hosting us here. I like that we kind of bring students in, but now when you said it's always good to hear from students, that is good.
Your windows are too small for you to see. Pick the right ones.
I'd say Dr. Spick and Collins, but that's a, I don't know what that sounds.
It's a throw straight.
Good. Yes. Good to have you. Thank you for coming and sticking around today.
Thank you for having us. Yes, this is great. Ready?
Good. We are ready when you guys are.
Okay, great. So we're here tonight to present on multi-tiered system of support, which is a framework for supporting students and enhancing instruction. And it is promoted by the Mass Department of Education. So just to go back a little bit, um, we have a response to intervention program in our elementary schools and also to some degree in our, our middle school, but it, just the format looks a little bit different. So response to intervention, for those who aren't familiar with it, is a program in which we identify student needs through regular screening, we progress monitor, we analyze data and we provide intervention to students. We track their progress and determine when students are no longer in need of support. So we have an entry next to criteria to it. And, and the focus is very much on intervention, supporting students who have academic weaknesses. And that's something that we've had in Essex, I think for a little over 10 years and Manchester, a little bit less than that, but we've had these programs in place for about a decade across the district. However, we have very different programs in Manchester and in Essex, in our elementary schools. And so Julie, uh, the former curriculum director, Julie Deroche, and I began working last year with the team of literacy spec lists and looking at how are we supporting students around literacy. Julie also spearheaded a change in our literacy curriculum so that we had a more structured literacy curriculum. So this is something we've been looking at for a while. Angela came, but we knew that we had to address some issues around continuity and consistency across the elementary level. So Angela came in this year and it was the perfect timing. She came in with a fresh pair of eyes, worked with the principals and our literacy leaders. And we have made a transition into a program called, or framework called multi-tiered system of supports. Basically, if you, it's, if you start with the concept of response to intervention and then think about how that can expand to be a system supporting the success of all students and integrating universal design for learning comment, um, concept, then you have multi-tiered system of support. So starting with, we have our mission as a district where we are creating a comprehensive experience that supports students' academic, social and emotional development and prepares them in the way that Tricia was just talking about for, um, critical thinking and problem solving and success at the post-secondary level. Well, think about that. That is our mission. And then Angela and I talked about, well, how do we take that vision and apply it to this multi-tiered system of supports for students? So the vision for the program, which fits into the mission, is that we will be providing high-quality tiered instruction for students. We've done some of that through RTI over time, but not with the consistency that we wanted to have. And how do we do that, not just around literacy, but also across academic, broader academic skill development, literacy, mathematics? How do we support students from behavioral perspective and socially and emotionally? Um, and provide an inclusive environment. So these are core concepts for us. We've been working in these areas for a while, but I'm going to talk a little bit, and Angela is too. How do we do that in a more integrated way in supporting students' success in the district and creating a framework and an environment that supports the success of all students rather than just focusing on more of the intervention piece? We're not giving that up. It's just a broader approach, um, to do, supporting student success. So if you go to the next slide, um, because you might be wondering, so what is the difference between response to intervention and MTSS? So we're really making this shift from a reactive response where, that we have students who are struggling. So we're going to give them support. We do that through response to intervention, through small group and individual work with students. We ultimately also may provide that support through special education. But, and there's a continuum, but with MTSS, we're making this shift in our thinking so that we're working more systemically. We're taking a proactive approach that anticipates student needs as opposed to waiting until students have difficulty and then identifying that through assessment and screening and providing support. So it's, it's a philosophical shift. It's a shift toward universal design for learning, which is an approach where we look at how do we support the success of every student? If you go to the next slide, Pam. Here's a direct comparison between response to intervention, which we've used, and this multi-tiered system of supports. So as I mentioned before, we had response to intervention and there are many benefits to it and we're not giving those up. But screening students, focus on academics, especially literacy, we use data, progress monitoring data to make decisions about student needs. We provided instruction in, within the classroom as well as small group and individual interventions. Um, and sometimes this process was used as a pre-referral for special education. We had students that were not responding and making the kind of gains we wanted to see. So they might be referred to special education. So fast forward to multi-tiered system of supports, which is more of an organizational framework. We're expanding to academic needs and skills across math, literacy. We're supporting students behaviorally and socially, emotionally. We're seeking to meet the needs of all students. So we will have students who are struggling, who need intervention. We also have students who need more challenge. We will continue to engage in data-driven decision-making and monitoring progress. We're using evidence-based supports, which Angela and I will get into more detail about. It's really about systemic change as opposed to looking solely at individual, individual needs we need to support. The areas of focus for this program, framework are academic reading, written language and mathematics, behavioral. We've been using a, using a framework for some time now caused, called positive behavior intervention supports, where we look at, again, how do we support the needs of all students so that they can be successful in terms of following routines? Their, when we say behavior, we mean following routines, um, adopting the habits of being a student, having success socially. So we have a framework around that. And then also, um, and Angela will talk more about this in terms of the schedule, but we also will provide sort, support around social skills and emotional regulation for students. And you can go to the next slide. So our plan for fiscal year 2023, so the next school year, is that we will offer supports. And so when we say tier one, two and three supports, what does that mean? That means that we provide support in tier one. Tier one is a universal support. It's how we support students at the classroom level, at the daily instructional level. We then have a tier two where we would provide targeted intervention for students, might happen in the classroom, might happen outside of the classroom, small group, and, and designed to meet needs of groups of students who may have weaknesses in a particular area. And then we have tier three supports for students who need more intensive, frequent intervention. And students can move fluidly between those areas depending on their needs. We are looking at some changes in the way that we deploy our staff in the district who support students. So, um, we're looking at district-wide assignment of staff so that we can respond to the data before us. When we look to see who is struggling in math, who's struggling in literacy, who needs more help in other areas? We can, if at a particular time, there's more needs in Essex or there's more needs in Manchester, we can flow based on the data. Um, and we're not locked into, we have this many staff in this building and that many in that building. They all are becoming district-wide interventionists. So we're really look at, looking at equity of service based on student data. So students who struggle in one building and students who struggle in another building at the same level will both receive the same supports. We have, Angela has worked, I take no credit. Uh, Angela has worked very hard with the principals on developing a common elementary schedule that we can use to deliver those supports. I mentioned the intervention staff already. And we're also looking at how can we embed social, emotional learning in our daily schedule. And we've also made time for that. And with that, I will turn it over to Angela.
Thank you. Well, I just want to start by saying that, um, it's been so much fun to be here, number one. Um, as an interim person coming in and learning about the district and seeing all the hard work that had been done that really set the foundation for where this is going. You were, I really felt like the district was poised to make this next move. And when I talked to people, when I first came in, when I talked to principals and I talked to teachers and I talked to other administrators, I kept saying, what would, what would you really love to focus on? What's the thing you really want to focus on? And repeatedly I heard, we have such differences between our two elementary schools. We'd really like to come together. We'd like to see a district focus, um, across the elementary schools. And the teachers have been amazing to work with. We've been able to do professional development this year. Bringing the, the staff from both schools together, using a, a common text to ground some of the professional development we've done. We've, I've worked collaboratively with Allison and the principals in doing goal setting. The specialist for both math, we've been able to add a math specialist. Thank you very much for that. As well as work with the math interventionists that were in place and the reading specialists. And really talk about, how do we take the work that you've done in RTI and start that shift to something more comprehensive, like a multi-tiered system of support? And, um, and people have just been fantastic. So I just think, you know, that's kind of nice for you to hear from a little bit of an outside lens coming in. So you can go to the next slide, Pam. Thank you. So in doing this, the district has been using a universal screening for math and literacy at the elementary level. We are making a shift to a new system next year, which is called iReady. And, um, and part of this shift is because this is a learning system. It's not only an assessment, but it also has instructional tools that accompany it. So, um, this will be an assessment that will be given three times a year. It's given at the beginning of the year, mid-year and end of year, and all students will take the assessment. The thing that's a little bit unique about iReady is that it's an adaptive assessment. And I don't know if you're familiar with adaptive assessments, but what the assessment does is it adjusts the challenge level of each question based on how the student responds to the question before. So when you have an adaptive assessment, you end up in the end with results from a diagnostic that is very individualized. It's very specific to how the student answered the questions. This tool also has a digital instructional component that develops a plan. It's called my plan. And it's div, it's designed for the individual needs of each student based on their diagnostic. So this is something that just gets added to part of their instructional experience. It's digital. It, the recommendation for it is that it's about 30 minutes in each content area a week for the students as an additional supplementary support. It can be a support or it can be an extension. If the student is scoring really high and advanced, it will take the student into ways to enrich their learning experience as well. So it really fits the philosophy of an MTSS model because it's there and it's designed to meet the needs of every individual student, wherever they are on the learning continuum at any particular grade level. As far as assessments go, we may use additional diagnostics for students that perhaps we don't have really clear information on, and we feel like we might need additional, uh, data to develop their intervention points.
Okay.
So there will be two level of, of data teams. In the district, you've had, you've have. In the district, you've had, you have data teamwork that's been underway. They've had data meetings on a regular basis at the building level. In this new model, we are going to start the data discussions with a district data team. And that district data team will consist of reading specialist, math specialist, representatives from student support teams, the elementary principals. Allison and myself will be part of the district data team. And what we're going to be doing during that time is we're going to be taking a look at all of the elementary data together. So rather than separating it out by schools immediately, we're going to look at all of the student data. We're going to analyze that data. We're going to use our predetermined markers to identify what students are going to qualify for what tier of intervention. Allison talked to you about there's three tiers of interventions. Sometimes, you know, the very best intervention is a tier one for any given student. And, and then there are others who have more specific targets that really need to be met. But we'll talk about that. The other thing that I have been so impressed with here is the pool of talent that exists in the elementary specialist intervention staff. As I've been able to work with them this year, they really bring a very, each of them brings a different skill set to the table. Some of them have really strong coaching capacities, where they could go in and co-teach in a classroom in tier one and add tremendous value to what's happening there. Others have really strong skills in various interventions that they've become experts at over the years. And so by pooling them as district staff, you really see this larger pool of talent. And we're really hoping that through this process, we're going to be able to match the adult talent to the needs of the students through the data that we get in these assessments. After the work has been done in really determining what students are qualifying for what tier of intervention, then the information will go to the building-based teams. And the specialists will continue to facilitate those building-based data teams. And there they will talk about classroom strategies. They'll identify the actual resources and strategies that will be used to meet the needs of the students. And at that point, the various interventionists will already be determined as to who will be in what school for that period of time based on the student data. And that keeps the data cycle meeting going. During those building-based meetings too, they'll also be talking about classroom strategies that are going to be used, as well as how progress monitoring is going to happen. But to do all of this, the really challenging goal of developing a common elementary schedule was an essential tool to make this happen. And so we sat and we really thought about, you know, what are our objectives for this common elementary schedule? And, and you see them here. You know, first and foremost is we wanted a schedule that was student-centered, that we were able to start building time on learning based on research best practices. And that allows us to, you know, really put forth some accountability and comparability between the schools. We wanted to memorialize any kind of common elementary programming that we're developing. And we wanted that to be transparent and shareable with the community. And the schedule allows for that to happen. We wanted it to facilitate the shift to multi-tiered systems of support. And we also wanted it to demonstrate efficient use of our resources and be something that would facilitate the scheduling of shared staff. So not only our intervention staff, but this is going to make things so much better for other specialists in the district that work across the two schools. Okay, so I'm going to attempt to explain this to you. You know, this is your bigger picture view. These are samples, these are, this is one day in what we're calling more of the master schedule. So what you're looking at here is you're looking at how all of the special subjects get scheduled in, how lunch gets scheduled in for all of the grade levels at both of the schools, and how we're scheduling integrated support into the classroom. Because in this new model, all of the literacy specialists and the reading specialists will be going into the classroom during that content time at each grade level. So we had to create a waterfall schedule for them. We had to fix the schedule for each of the grade levels and then create a waterfall schedule for both the literacy specialist and the math specialist so that we could get them into the content areas in which they're supporting during class time. So it was a challenge, but we've, we've done it. It did force the schedule to be grade level-driven, however. To do that, we needed to be able to do this. So if you, when you look at these schedules, anything you see in green represents literacy. Anything you see coded in blue represents math. And this light fleshy color and the little dark fleshy color, those are all specialist courses. At the top, it labels what they are. There are music, physical education, technology, library. The darker colors on this particular day, this is a Tuesday, represents the Memorial Elementary School. And the lighter peach represents the Essex Elementary School. So, and then all of the individual color coding is grade level coding so that we can see who has lunch when, who has recess when, when the waterfall schedule of specialists are happening at each. So this is kind of your big picture view. And then I'll give you a couple of samples of classrooms so that you can see what this looks like.
It's the master, right? This is trying to show you everything that's going on at that point.
Everything that's going on. And basically, really what I wanted you to see in this was how this was going to work to integrate the support and how we came to that. So you can go to the next one.
This is easier to look at.
Yeah, so this is a little easier. I believe that this might be a third grade schedule. I think this is, represents a third grade schedule. And so now you can see what this plays like, plays out in a daily schedule. So you can see that every morning, every classroom, every elementary classroom starts with a morning meeting. And that's the first thing that happens in their day. Way to focus their attention for the day. On this particular schedule, they are going to have their specials first thing in the morning. So you can see that after morning meeting at eight forty-five, that first period is going to be specials. The blocks in this schedule, even though they don't look like they're equal, they are all based on forty-five minute blocks. And we needed to do that because all of the specialists are based on forty-five minute blocks. So to make this all work in a way that we can, we, we did that. So if you see here, you'll see that the math block actually runs from eight thirty to ten forty-five. So you see a lot of different things that break that apart, but it's a seventy-five minute math block. And forty-five of those minutes will be with integrated support. Okay, so that's how you can read that. There's, there's a short movement snack break there after that, before they go into literacy. That's a fifteen-minute block, it looks like that's longer. So read the times rather than look at the size of the blocks on this schedule. And then you see the same thing happens with literacy. So the first literacy block is a ninety-minute literacy block. Forty-five minutes of that block does have the integrated support, but there's an additional twenty-five minutes of literacy, as you see four times a week later in the day. And the wonders program that was adopted as a new resource for teaching literacy in the district uses an integrated approach for teaching writing, as well as all of the reading skills. And so that's why you see this represented the way it is, so that it can support the integrated support, approach that's in that program. And then the students have a lunch and a recess. There is a social studies and science block every day. However, it may rotate back. The teachers may approach this different ways. So they can approach it by saying they're going to do science three days one week and social studies twice that week and flip it the next week. They may decide that they're going to teach a full unit of science and then a full unit of social studies. After that, the important thing is the time on learning within the two content areas. And then also what is new in this schedule this time is you see that there is a social, emotional learning tier-one block incorporated four days a week. Because one of the things that Allison explained to you is in a true MTSS model, you are not only addressing the academics, the academic needs of the students, but you're addressing their social, emotional, and behavioral needs as well. And so it's really essential that you start, you start with a tier one, where you're putting universal supports in place for all of the students. And I think one of the things that, you know, I know you've heard, you've probably witnessed with your own families and we've heard this year, is the fact that, you know, COVID hit our kids hard in this area, that their social skills are not where we've seen them in the past as they return from being, having their education disrupted in the way that it was by the pandemic. So I think this is going to be super helpful to be able to have in the schedule and be able to focus a little bit of time during the school day on those skills. And this is just a first grade schedule. Did you turn, Pam? This is just another example of another grade level so that you could just see what that looks like. So we're very excited about this. This is a big deal. Every day we find little errors in the schedule. You know, we just keep refining and refining and we'll continue to do that until we, till we get it right. But the teachers have this latest version in front of them now. And at the building level, they are starting the process of scheduling some of the other specialists in, to the schedule for special education services and other things like that. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
One or two pages.
No, actually, just, I was gonna say, well, let's do, we'll go around for questions. I just have one logistics. So this is, so naive question maybe to mention. Were the schools on a synchronized schedule before the two elementary schools? No. And is this rolled out now or this is preparation for the fall?
It's preparation for the fall.
Excellent, okay.
It's preparation for the fall. They both have the same school day. Their start and end times were the same, but they operate.
How they're divided up.
Yeah, and they had, there was an understanding about time on learning for both of the schools. So, but this is, and I think Pam, you sent everybody the revised time on learning document.
That last page that came through today is kind of like a snapshot of what happens in here.
Right.
In this, in this format, this looks like a little, like secondary schedule. And you see literacy, they're not going to sit there for ninety minutes straight and get a lecture. It's kind of like the allocated time. And they've done a tremendous job. Principals have been good partners. There's been a lot of debate and discussion and joint problem solving. But responding and working toward coming up with that common blueprint so we can ensure that the program is actually being delivered in the same way in both buildings. We tend to find some fringe things or some community-oriented events that are different. Our primary concern is to ensure that the core program is being delivered in the same way, with the same amount of time dedication in each building. And I would just say, I'm very excited about the, the intervention reorganization and deploying people to the need instead of developing a caseload based on your available staff. I think that very much supports equity work in a way that impacts instruction so that we're ensuring that a student designated at one level in either building is getting the same type of treatment. And just because one building may have fewer kids in the high-risk area, they're not then starting to provide extended services to students who can't access that and the other. So just tremendous amount of work here, and I'm sure tons of questions. But this has been many years in the making, as Allison said. A lot of time was spent on the literacy piece. I mean, we still revisit it and decisions made and how we can make things better. But that was kind of the big first step to try to pull each other, pull both places closer together and work toward a common end. So thank you guys very much for this and let's discuss.
And that, yes, and I mean, really, this was a collaborative effort. This was, no one person can take credit for this. This really was, we started this conversation about moving in this direction with the literacy leaders and included math specialist as well in that probably around October, November. So, you know, this has been, we presented the blueprint from the Department of Ed around MTSS to that team. And that was the core team where the discussion really started to happen. Because our data was showing us that we weren't where the district wanted to be as far as being able to offer equitable services to the students.
So why don't we go around with the questions? We'll, we'll let Teresa start and go around that way.
Can I pass and go?
Okay.
Other people might choose to ask my questions and I say a lot of things. I do say a lot of things.
So I know that Essex has Title I-funded support already. How will that support work when staff are located across buildings?
That it will, the services for Title I will continue to be provided in the same way. And our staff that is dedicated to Title I will continue to service the Title I students, so.
So the, the Title I-funded positions then will stay at Essex, is that what you're saying?
Well, Title I finds a partial position. And so we, we're going to look at the students that are identified for Title I service more holistically with the other students. And then we will provide the Title I services and we'll determine at that point the dedicated staff to that. I don't want to commit too firmly to that piece until we have this all underway, but we will be very respectful of consistency of Title I programming for the year and dedicated staff to that.
Great. And then how much travel will be required from, from support staff during the day? Are staff going to be going back and forth? Or is it like this day I'm at Memorial, tomorrow I'm at Essex?
And it will probably not even be this day because we're basing it on the student data. It may be like for a trimest. Do you know what I mean?
Yep. Specialists are by the day, right? Our teachers.
Well, and I'm just thinking, and also I noticed that library was on our list of specials.
Yes, library.
Forty-five minute block.
So because we've reduced, because we've reduced foreign language, library is now back in the rotation. So there's things that we can do with this master schedule that are not instructional support and budget-oriented, which is you can look at the allocation of resources to see. So right now, we know that if we go for next year and are fortunate to gain resources back and go to put foreign language, world language back in place, we might have a time in the day problem where we have, don't have enough time in the day to offer all of the specials in the current configuration.
Yeah.
So we may need to look at doing it differently. You know, maybe libraries K-two and foreign language is three-five. I'm just making that up off the top of my head, so if anybody's listening. It could be, we have to negotiate a longer school day. I mean, if we want all of the pieces in the day, do we need another forty-five minutes to an hour or ninety minutes to give people more planning and more content time? So it gives us a look of both, across the elementary school at what we have, what we can add in, what we would need to take out. And I think it shows you that the day's pretty. And I think it shows you that the day is pretty tight when we put in all of the required time on task. So. But yes, library is back in as a go-to, as a teaching block for kids next year.
Will parents be informed of the results of the universal screenings?
I'm, you know, that's a great question. I don't think we've talked about that yet. I don't know that parent, do parents currently get, because we're using a universal.
I think that a lot of parents just aren't aware that they take place.
Right.
I think in the past they've been provided if parents ask, but it sounds like you're getting a lot of data from it and it just might be a.
That's an excellent question.
Especially if it's giving more than just.
Right.
Information. If it's giving strength information, that would be great for parents.
Yeah, yeah.
And then I'll just ask one more. So I see the integrated support in math and I see the integrated support in reading, but we had also. Or you had also talked about the behavioral interventions and the SEL aspect. But I, I don't see the integrated support during those SEL blocks. Is, is there a plan for that?
Not yet. This is our first step in that aspect of it. I mean, that, that piece of it. Will definitely need to be developed, but by being able to at least get some of it into tier one. It's our first step. We do have some teachers who are going to be doing some work over the summer. In trying to develop kind of a scope and sequence of skill set that we'd like to accomplish during that time. But we don't have a plan for next year for integrated support for the SEL yet.
Just to clarify, so when, the, what was formerly known as the win block is gone now?
It is.
Okay. Anyone else?
I cede my time to.
Well, we're going this direction.
Well, I'm seated.
It's still coming.
So when you guys were going through this, you know, I see, what, you know, what I see here and what you discussed was. You know, basic just improvements and sounds like efficiencies. Just the fact there were differences in the two different programs between schools. I'm sure that provides more efficiencies across everything as well. What are the drawbacks to, are, are there any drawbacks?
I think that's a really good question. And every ti, anytime you make a big change like this. Somebody has to give something. And I think those are more cultural to both of the schools. The way that they may have done business in the past, they may have lost a component of that. And so that's hard. I think that's, you know, that it's a cultural shift and this is a big change. So that's where I would say that, that, that would be a drawback and depending on who you talk to.
Or like for the students.
Right. Right, I think at this point, you know, from the work that we've done and in the conversations that we've had. I'm not seeing drawbacks for the students at this time. I think once we implement, you know, we might recognize something, oh, we don't have this. Right, exactly. But at this point, this is a very student-driven approach. And, and I'm not seeing drawbacks there. The drawbacks that I am seeing are the things that, that each of the individual school may have had to. Let go of.
Yep.
To make it happen.
Okay, thanks.
So my question, and I was really happy when I was reviewing the presentation to see kind of the inclusion of universal design for learning. Because I had the good fortune of studying under David Rose, who's one of the people who developed that program. So I know that it's been a while, but I know that that is based on kind of stripping away barriers for all different types of learners. So I'm just curious if in your assessments or in follow-up assessments. Also thinking about Gardner's multiple intelligence theory and different, that basically is a theory that talks about everyone having individual. Learning styles and they have strengths in certain areas. So I'm just curious if in your assessments, you're able to learn. About those individual learning styles to kind of inform instruction and how each kid is, you know, gonna react and learn best.
That's a great question. And where the assessment is new, I don't know that.
Yeah.
You know, but that would be an interesting lens to, to view the data with.
It would be an interesting lens. Right now, the assessment that we're looking at is more skills-based. What are the skills that children have in literacy? What are their skills in math? What you're speaking about. To me aligns with teaching approaches and understanding more where students are coming from. And how do I adapt my teaching to make sure that I'm connecting with students' strengths. Within the multiple intelligence. So it's a little bit of field of what we're doing right now. But I, I love the idea of thinking, how would we bring that in?
Yeah, it might be enough to ask our team working this summer on the SEL block playbook. To look at some inventories and build it into self-knowledge, like student self-knowledge.
That's a great idea.
So that they can start developing some self-advocacy.
Great, that would, yeah, that's a way to connect it. That's a great idea.
Okay, so I, I, but see, this is why we do this, because a bunch of my questions already got answered, which is great. A couple. Some to quite some. So, so one is a follow-up on the daily schedule with the win groups. So as an example, right now, I know that there are win groups, there are win groups for social emotional learning. My son is in one of them. So with the loss of that and with us not having planned intervention in this MTSS. Support model at this point, I'm wondering at what point we can expect some sort of understanding of how that's going to work. I understand if you don't have it today, but at what point we can understand how that sort of. And how that is going to work.
So teachers, in terms of, we built this SEL block into the schedule. So we will know before school starts what that is going to look like. So teachers need to do some development around that over the summer. So you would know before school starts.
Yep.
What is happening in that SEL block? We have to plan for that. I don't know the exact timeline. I don't think we're.
I might be asking a different question than what you're answering. I guess, I think what I'm asking is. So for instance, for the children who do need a little bit more social support, for instance, for an ADHD situation, that sort of thing. And they currently, once a week get pulled out with Dr. Welling and they go do their, their group thing and everything else. Are you suggesting that that level of intervention is going to be built in at tier one level? And that therefore we won't be doing assessments that involve that sort of thing? Or that we just won't be having pull-out support in that way? And again, if you don't have the answers right now, I'm just wondering at what point we can start to understand what there will be in place.
Yeah, so we don't have the answers right now, but we previously haven't worked with students at the tier one level. Well, we have to some degree, but not ev, not four days a week.
Yeah.
In terms of the schedule. So the, the theory behind multi-cheered systems of supports is. Let's work, provide the skill to all students, which we haven't in this way.
Right.
That we will be doing, going forward and then let's see who needs more.
Okay.
After we do that. So we would start at that tier one level and then see what's continuing to emerge. As an issue for students and is that, does it call for some group work from the school adjustment counselors? Is it something we need more staffing to achieve? Those are issues that we would be looking at going forward. But right now, we're looking to give all students that opportunity to do that work because we're really seeing the need. After the pandemic, the, just the reduced maturity of kids, the reduced social skills. Emotional regulation and it could go on.
Yeah.
So we're looking to really give that to everybody, but there will be students who need more. And so then we need to.
The next step will be to address how. Okay.
That's, that, that's what I wanted, I just wanted to clarify. This doesn't do away with, with counseling support or, or anything like that.
But it does do away with win group type things. So I'm not advocating for it.
As a format.
I'm just, as a format, that's what I.
In theory, you get, you get that in. Win is threaded through for literacy support, math support and a dedicated SEL block.
Right, okay. That's what, that's what I thought I was hearing. So part B to that, and then I just have one other after this. Part B to that is how, how is this going to be messaged out to parents who are going to be expecting to get their little win letters home? And, and their kid to be pulled and that sort of thing. Is, is there a plan in place for how this is going to be messaged to families? So that they understand the, the philosophical shift that we're undergoing here?
Yes.
I know you guys have worked on some materials. There's not just the MTSS. Big handbook, there's also an MTSS overview.
Yeah.
For next meeting, what we're working on is if you all remember when we did the, the MSBA project. As part of the get ready for MSBA, we had to develop a program overview. They were asking us to tell us what the, what facility supports we needed, but it created a nice little blueprint of. It's the wrong phrase to use because it's inappropriate for elementary, but lack of a better phrase at this hour, kind of a program of studies.
Yep.
You've got a blueprint running for that, which can probably work together with the MTSS explanation, the shift. Kind of like the diagram shifting from MTR, MTRS.
Forget it.
RTI to MTSS and then a program of studies that kind of explains, this is the curriculum focus in. This is our curriculum focus in how we're tied to things. Curriculum-wise, programmatically, with the frameworks, so people can understand the package of what it's supposed to look like K five. So yes, we're working on some explanatory materials and our goal is to have it ready and introduce the K. Parents to what the scope and sequence looks like for K five when we launch on their orientation in June one.
Fantastic, okay. All right, so then my final question, first of all, I am hugely in support of this, of, of having some. Some district-wide very clear similarities and we know that the culture and, and some things will be different naturally. At the flavor of each elementary school, but I'm, I'm very appreciative of this work. So my final question, when we say things like this is a philosophical shift. How is, were there teachers involved in this whole process? How many teachers were involved in this process and how's it being received by teachers? Because we ask a lot of teachers. And, and I, I know we just need to be, I just like to have an understanding of. How much of a shift this is for them. And I know it's individual, but, but just as a whole, how this is. How this is being received as a, as a framework.
That's an interesting question. Well, we worked with all of the literacy specialists across the district.
And, and, and we had a couple.
Special educators, special ed person.
Yeah.
Classroom level is where this is taking place.
It, it's taking place everywhere.
Yeah.
But, and I think we started the discussion during some of the book group meeting. Later in the winter with classroom teachers. They weren't grassroots in developing the schedule. But there was, conversation started there about the fact that we were going to work towards a common schedule.
Okay.
For next year. We, this is the second iteration of the schedule that's gone to teachers. And when the first one went out, both of the principals had meetings with all of the teachers. To gather feedback.
Yep.
And then that feedback came back, the principals brought that feedback back to us. And we worked with the feedback to see what kind of changes could we make to address some of that feedback. And, and, and we were able to make a significant amount of changes without losing the integrity of the, of the. Of it. And then they just got the second iteration yesterday. And I've really, so far, now this doesn't mean that people, everybody's happy. But I've only heard from two teachers so far. Where I heard from a lot of teachers the first time it went out, you know, because it takes some digesting and to see, okay, what are the implications of this? But we really tried to do our best to listen to what their feedback was and see if we couldn't address. As many things that came through on the feedback. So rather than being involved in the grassroots development of it, it's been more getting their feedback. As the drafts go out and, and trying to address their needs.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that, that, that they're being heard and having things addressed in real time with that, with their input as well, so. Thank you. That's all I have.
Just one comment, question more for Avi. Yeah, if I remember correctly, I think iReady is kind of a data hog. So doing the assessments, like you don't want to overload an access point or you're gonna, it's gonna, you're gonna sludge up your network pretty good.
Good feedback to know.
In terms of doing that, in terms of doing that, I was like, don't do a lot of the, we have iReady, but don't do like a lot of the classrooms all at once. Cause you can, you can slow down.
That's a great question that I'm gonna ask them.
Yes, I would do different wings of your school when you do the different assessments.
Certainly hope Memorial can handle it at this point.
I hope so too.
Usually like each class has like an access point and obviously like, I'm assuming they do.
Uh, I don't know if it's exactly one-to-one in every single classroom.
If you do two classrooms, you get like maybe forty or fifty.
Nothing gained on the job. Figure it out later.
I'm writing it right.
Funny thing is Don's getting his, our new network administrator actually has been looking right into wireless footprint. And just to see where it needs to be beefed up. I don't think he had this one on his radar.
Yeah, you probably should get the specs early because if I remember correctly, it can, it can chew up a lot.
Awesome feedback.
Thank you, yeah.
So with commentary and questions from five of my six learned colleagues already on the table. I'd ask if Mr. Foster is still with us, if he has any questions or comments.
I am, thank you. Getting to the center of the table here. So I have a bunch of questions and I, like Teresa, want to echo her comments. I very much appreciate what you're working toward here. Both the consistency across schools is something we heard in the strategic planning process. You know, thinking about this as a system and, you know, being student-centered about this. So I'm very supportive of the work you're undertaking and recognizing this is the first step. So a number of my questions here, I think, have to do with me as a new person on the school committee and understanding what our role as a school committee is. So, you know, however, however that gets responded to, kind of take them in turn, I guess. So my first comment actually, rather than a question, well, maybe it's a question. We've used the term fluid a lot, but what I'm hearing is that the assessment that this is basically built on is three times a year. Which functionally is twice a year since one is end of the year and there's really not an opportunity to act on that. So what does fluid really mean? My, my assumption coming into this conversation, it was that fluid would be much more frequent and flexible and dynamic than twice a year. Or trimester even. So, and you might not have the answer to that. I know Angela, you noted that there are likely to be additional assessments that help you decide that. I think you can't rely on two or three time a year assessment to do this well, so you, you're gonna have to do that. But you may not be ready to answer today, but you know, some, some response to what fluid means in practicality. I think will be very helpful. Second. How do we know that, oh, do you want to, you respond to that? Go ahead.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to remind you that, excuse me. That's when the iReady assessment would be given, but you know, remember there are formative assessments happening all the time. In the classroom and with the specialists that are working with students. So that's really where so much progress monitoring data is coming from. But I hear what you're saying, you know, when you're, I, I think I hear you asking what other kind of formalized assessment will be used. In defining fluidity in this process. Am I correct?
Uh, no, I actually appreciate your comments that the formative assessments will be used in this system. And it may be it's a messaging thing, you know, that, that you put so much emphasis on iReady. But to, to, for parents and students and teachers to know that those formative assessments will play into this could be very helpful as well.
Jake, I'd just say for, probably internally, we're getting caught on fluid, at least for me. Our big, the huge shift in this and the big ask for staff in fluidity is that we're going to have a, a core set of four people. Who will be assigned and reassigned to locations and students throughout the year. So two big shifts or three big shifts in the year, that's brand new for us. So I, I, I know when, when you say fluid, Angela and Allison, that's what I'm thinking about is. the kids are going to dictate, um, where the resources go. And, and I think that is such a fundamental shift in our philosophy that we may not be articulating that as clearly as we should. But to build the caseload first and then assign the teachers as opposed to filling up a teacher caseload with available students, really levels the playing field and creates a much more equitable situation and ensures that we're treating and providing for our kids who were, have the greatest need.
My, my only concern with, with that, or with maybe with the language you're using is as soon as you start talking about caseload and assigning for a defined period of time, like a trimester or semester, that feels like you're in the RTI model. And, and I hear, I hear the shift you're trying to make and, and I think a lot of it comes down to what fluid means operationally. And I know you haven't implemented this yet, so it's something to explore and consider. Um, but it might, there might be ways to be more dynamic, uh, if you think of kinder time, uh, shorter time periods, depending on the student's need. So my second question, um, really comes down to how we know whether or not this will be successful. You know, what are we gonna look for as metrics to know that this is working? Um, you know, this is my first meeting, my first day, but I have been coming to school committing, school committee meetings for well over a decade now. And I can think of multiple times we've had, the school committee, not we, I wasn't involved in them, school committee has had these kind of conversations about looking at data, particularly around literacy, uh, you know, taking action to support students based on that data. Um, but we, it's, it's in essence, kind of that same conversation, what I now have experienced, have heard, you know, basically the third time over. So what's going to be different here and how do we know that this is going to be successful? And I think one thing I heard, maybe Angela, you say that might be a little bit different here is, you know, a thoughtful effort of purposely matching adult talent with student need. Um, but I'm also hearing a lot of implication for the classroom teacher and knowing MTSS system a little bit and the importance of a good tier one system, which I know we put a new literacy curriculum in for. Um, this is, and you, and you've talked about how big of a shift this is and it's going to have implications for all staff. How do we, you know, what are we doing to support the classroom teachers, are they ready for it? Um, clearly there's changes in the TA and, and, uh, intervention roles. Is the, are, are the shifts here, um, big enough that we should be looking at job descriptions? Is there a PD plan, uh, for the staff to make this successful? And do we have a sense of, you know, what, what success looks like so that we know that this had an impact that's been different from past?
I, I can speak to pieces of this, I, I think those are all excellent questions. Um, and all components that, you know, have to be thought through. But one piece I can speak to is the professional development piece. I think that, uh, the district, as Allison was talking about, has been working towards this. And I think some of the professional development that has happened already has built, um, some of the foundation for this to move forward. Um, the district made a commitment to, um, Ruler, which is a social emotional, um, learning framework. And Ruler has now developed a curriculum which will be a tremendous support for the tier one SEL block, um, in the classroom. But they've done a lot of training around that, so the teachers, um, really have de- developed a comfort level with that piece, so. Um, I'm starting with the social emotional aspect of it, just because Ruler came to my mind first. Um, the work that the district has engaged in this year with Michael Eitman and Culture Seven around DEI is another component to that in building teachers' skill to be able to address this. Um, the professional development that has happened around literacy and continued to happen this year, um, not only was designed to help the teachers apply what they had learned around the science of reading, but it was also designed to help them develop, build their collaborative practices across the district, which is going to be essential to this model. Um, they, there's been professional development this year around, um, AIMS Web Plus, which was the assessment system that was being used. They had moved to a digital format of AIMS Web Plus this year. We did professional development around that, that really focused on how to not only, um, administer the assessment, but then what to do with the data and how to use the data in a data cycle. We've started the iReady training already, we've done an intro- introductory training this spring and we have two more trainings coming for the fall. One is about administering the test, the other one is about using data to inform instruction and how that works in the classroom. So, um, you know, I, I know I haven't touched on everything, but that's just to give you a, a taste of some of the professional development that's happened or is planned that is going to feed this process.
The only thing I'd piggyback on that is we also have, um, everyday math trained.
Yes.
Facilitators here, same is true for Ruler, we have Ruler facilitators and trainers now onsite. But I think, again, in the messaging and the narrative, teachers instructional practice is so strong. What we're trying to provide, and I hope everyone sees in the end, is system structure and a curriculum framework. So we're all playing off the same sheet music, because you can have thirty-five first chairs, but if we're not working in concert, we're not going to get the outcomes that we know we can get. So I would say our biggest goal in this is to create a framework of common purpose. Something that is transparent and explainable to people who are utilizing our system and ultimately better outcomes for students, because we have stagnated a bit. And I know, um, we're, we're in a time where we really have to question the role of MTCAS and the role of standardized testing. I don't foresee a place where there is no role for it, I see it being put more in its place. But there is work for us to do there to continue to produce the results that we've been producing over the years. So I think if we look at our numbers over time, absent the COVID years, I think that's, we have to throw those out. Um, there's a bit of stagnation and I think by creating this curriculum framework and ensuring that whatever classroom you're in in the third grade, you're getting your ninety minutes a day on literacy. Whichever building you're in, you're making sure you're getting your, your two or three sessions a week of social studies. And it's not so independently driven that we can't, we have no accountability for the outcomes that we have. So I think what we need to do through this structure is, once we go through the pains of implementing, really remind teachers that their expertise is in instructional design and practice. They don't need to try to create a wonder style program, they need to take some tools, tell us when they don't have the tools that they need and put them together in a way that works for the twenty students in front of them, so we get the best possible outcome. So Jake, I hear what you're saying and I think we're working backwards a little bit to create a structure around a set of really skilled professionals so that we can maximize student outcomes and the talents of the teachers that we have in the classroom.
That was really well said.
It is well said, and I, I just want to add because Jake was asking about assessment and assessments we've presented in the past and how will we know when we're successful? And so we've made a very thoughtful shift to a standards based assessment. In the past, we were, well, most recently, the assessment that we were using when Julie and I reported out student outcomes, we were looking at an assessment that was a screening that was designed to determine which students needed assistance, so, but this is going to help us see how students are meeting standards. And in addition to that, iReady is much more comprehensive. The previous assessment that we were using was very fluency focused. We now are looking at comprehension, vocabulary, we're still looking at phonics, we're still looking at phonemic awareness, but we're looking at skills with broader implications for students. Um, and so it's standards based and it's a broader source of data, um, on skills that students will be deploying directly in the classroom. So I would argue that we're also getting better data about student performance and skills than we've had with previous assessments.
Yeah, I just have, uh, two more, which I think should be quicker, but just to follow up on that, I, I really hope a couple of years from now, we don't have to have this conversation again and we can move on to social studies and science and, and the other subjects, uh, because I know, you all know as a, as a parent and community member, I have spoken up about our extreme focus on math and literacy. Um, and it, I, I feel bad that I'm joining this and jumping right into that same conversation, so hopefully we can move past that at some point soon. So my next question has to do with the changed elementary schedule. Functionally, is, is this, uh, something that the school committee should be voting on? In other words, you know, the schedule is a statement of our priorities and, you know, a, a, a use of our resources. Um, particularly as an example, treating SEL as a separate thing from academics, which is, I don't think that's exactly how it's being done, I think that SEL is also being treated in core academics as well, but you can speak to that a little bit. But if we separate it like that, that is a statement to the community and, and how we're using our resources. Um, it also is saying that we're focused on it, which is a good thing. Um, so I just want to put that on the table and, and for clarification about whether or not that is a school committee level item that we should be.
I don't think this is a committee informing, I think it's more especially at the schedule level, it's just, or we're not voting on approval, just for, this is just more informational for us.
I'm, I'm not asking what we're doing here, I'm asking, should it be?
Should the schedule be, no.
Good, schedule is building the level. Schedules are developed every year, there's a version of this that's existed every year, what's new and what we're actually very proud to bring to you is that we've developed a unified one.
Yeah, I'm very appreciative of that, yes. Uh, so my last question, which I think is very short, am I hearing correctly that interventions are only happening in the literacy and math blocks? That other classes won't be interrupted? That's what I see on the schedule and I think I heard you say.
That's true, yeah, yes.
Okay, great, that's a good change too, thank you.
I was just gonna tag on before, schedules will come up to school committee level if we're extending the day. Making significant changes to start and end times or something of that nature. And then program adds.
Or, or timeline learning, right?
Right.
Foreshadowing our next topic, which will be draft school committee calendar. It's the schedule that comes up, but before we leave, thank you Jake, was, was there anything else?
That's it, thank you.
You're a blurry bunch of pixels on the screen, but it was good to have you.
It'll be bigger.
We're probably the same view. Um, I just had a very brief question and I'm reminded again by the sheer amount of talent that's on the school committee with the, the questions we ask. It's gonna be interesting to watch time management and where we go to in future meetings. Um, I just wanted to say thank you, it appears the change is proactive, um, I like the flexibility. I do like, to Jake's point, I do like the explicitly about SEL, it goes back to, I think, which was one of the second comments about the adult behavior in the district. And it's good that we're explicit about, hey, here's how you respond and interact and manage all the way through, so it's a key part.
It's probably not bad to note that every level has some type of an advisory or student centered reflection block. Um, and they're developmentally appropriate at each level, so we stayed away from titling them all the same. Um, this was the suggestion that the principals came up with.
This was the teachers', yeah.
And, and it also goes to, the other really important thing is kind of unifying the two elementary schools, if there's any regret that I have, and I'm sorry, I'm waxing, they're going way out. Six years here is just, there's so much great that I saw at Essex Elementary, but in, since because I was more memorial centric, that was like, oh, I wish I had a chance to get more into, so I like it that there's at least more sharing, so that's a good thing.
When I, I've referenced it since I've come here is that there's pockets of wonderful everywhere. And you want to make sure that all the kids get the wonderful, you know?
Yeah, that's a great idea, great way of putting it. So thank you very much for coming, staying around with us.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
I was way off on my time estimate for both of you.
Thank you so much.
We're out of practice for in person.
All right, so last two topics are draft school committee calendar.
Nothing that has to be settled tonight.
Yeah.
Quarter of nine, the biggest question is, we have one more meeting on the book and then we have that kind of tentative end of the year meeting on the twenty first. There are some things we could do on the twenty first, they could also be moved into the summer. Ideally, we were gonna have all the, we had talked about this briefly, ideally, we were gonna have all the district improvement plans and all the school, school improvement plans and roll through them starting in May. And we just got ta- taken off track and we just haven't had as much time to dedicate. Everything is in play and in process, so I put school improvement plans back in the fall after a conversation that we had and we can either do the district plan. If we do it at the end of June, I don't know who's going to be around to pay attention to it, we could do it as part of our August meeting, our launch for the year. So the June meeting is totally up to you.
I'll put right out there that the last day of school is an awful time to have another meeting.
Well, I didn't love writing it down on the page.
I bet you didn't, I bet you didn't.
Hope you guys have fun.
Yeah, 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 right, yeah, y'all vote for it, right?
That's a four hour block, right?
Anything beyond that, we're gonna have two members who were just elected.
That's just it.
Should probably hammer it out next session.
Yeah.
I know August second is floating out there as our retreat day, it already sounds like we're not all gonna be available for August second, so we might want to move that.
Okay.
To that's August, is it sixteenth? Yeah.
That we have to nail down though, because we have Michael Eitman, I mean, we have things.
Line up Mike.
We need that to be.
He may not be available, but we can work with, we can figure out a plan for that day.
Okay, yeah.
So we're postponing the discussion until next meeting on this book.
Yeah, so we're taking the twenty first offline, but we're not having that.
We're agreed that there won't be one on the twenty first and, so regarding the, the draft calendar though, can I just put out one idea?
Yeah.
That this is, um, this is awesome for, and this is what we like usually have, where we're gonna have such a new committee. It might be nice to really flesh out the, the school committee calendar and that might be something that, that after reorg happens with, with the chair and vice chair and you guys, because there's so much more than what's on these two things that we have to be at. And, and also like some expectations about.
So you're talking, I would love that, so like the subcommittee.
Yes.
Like, can we pick standing subcommittee day?
Yes.
Can we pick stand, put out a elongated collaboration schedule?
Yes.
Yes.
And understanding of things like, you know, budget presentation to the community here, and you are expected to be at this still, like, you know, these are things that aren't a big deal. Just some, some norms for.
Yeah, and I'm happy to go through my calendar from this past year and kind of just put in, like, we know now within a week or two when that finance subcommittee meeting.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
The more, the tighter the better.
Yes.
With over forty percent new school committee members, that will be helpful.
For real.
In my report, I think we've covered most of what we've been working on as a team over the past two weeks with these, um, with these presentations. I was gonna touch on the June meeting and then I will circulate. I know the conversation, if we go back to public comment, has come up about students exiting eighth to ninth grade, it is a common conversation.
Yeah.
Um, I wouldn't be surprised if it feels more heightened, the share if it actually is. I do have the statistics, um, on where we're at, if we want to look at them now or share them next meeting. But we run right around twenty-two percent, going back to.
Consistent numbers I think I've ever seen for anything.
To FY seventeen, so there do, we do have some surges. Um, and we have years where it feels like it's a, it's a bigger conversation that people are having because there's a lot going on or there's something that's not satisfactory.
But they did seem to be flat for the past.
The numbers are pretty flat.
Yeah.
So can I ask a question about that, and I think I had emailed this too, um, knowing that this, this is a unique year for eighth grade though, because this eighth grade class had no normal middle school year, not one like full normal middle school year. And so it has come up a couple of time when people, times when people, um, have concerns about, you know, how many kids go to private schools or other schools. You know, why don't we do exit surveys, why don't we do exit interviews and things like that? I wonder if this year might be an opportunity to do a very simple, if it was something you guys or Ann or Joanne were open to, a very simple end of eighth grade year.
Mm-hmm.
Where's your student headed in the fall, are you staying with us, are you not? Why?
Mm-hmm.
You know, what went into that and just to have that, just to have that information, it may not yield anything at all, but it might be an opportunity for parents to feel heard if they do have things to share and it might give us an actual snapshot.
I like the exit interview where the exit.
It would be, it would be challenging if you did that.
Survey, sorry, I'm.
Yeah.
No, I know what you're saying. Nine o'clock is gonna go to.
Yeah, but if it just goes to all eighth grade, then we have an idea of, I, I mean.
With, with.
Voluntary, you might just get off, might be skewed in any.
That's fine.
Yeah, and, and I was gonna say, and it's, it also without longitudinal data on it.
Right.
Um.
Well, we've got some longitudinal. Well, we've got some longitudinal.
And and quite.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess quite frankly, well, this is, this is about, this is objective data of are you coming, are, are you here or are you not here?
Right.
The, are you happy with how it's gone and where you at? In some ways, if you do that, then it's, should you also engage? Hey, how do you, as teachers, how do you feel that?
I think it's worth some consideration, but it's, it's very hard to pin down in my mind whether it's a perception of where they're going. Or dissatisfaction of where they're coming from.
Mm hmm.
And I don't know how we would tease that out appropriately.
And I'm not suggesting that we could in a survey, but it would give people a place to put their.
A starting point might be is people are leaving for Essex Tech or people are leaving for private to start to get a sense of what that profile looks like.
Mm hmm.
And quite frankly, if if we're going to pursue that, the data is there, I guess I'd also say consider across all the grade levels almost. And it opens up, we've, we've discussed this before in policy subcommittee and talking about how do we engage the communities? So I guess my only watch out is watch out to make sure you don't too specifically narrow. Well, how come they get asked, but none of the rest of us get asked about our concerns?
Mm hmm.
So just think about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just putting this out there as, as something that continually comes up, up, you know, and you know that communication is my thing. And people need to have a place to be heard. And so where are we going to give it?
Mm hmm. Well, I think it's about more than that, right? It's not just being heard. It's, we're collecting information also.
Yeah, but if you want to do the survey design well, that information can be garbage.
Yes, and and I guess I would also say, well, being heard matters. One of the things that I noted tonight with my, one of my. Aside from picking up somebody late from work was um that over thirteen hundred, I think. People, I assume have voted in Manchester just on, there were a couple of questions, but over thirteen hundred people have voted for school committee. Just over a quarter of the town, I think. So it's huge.
Chifting hundred.
Yeah, so there's, okay.
Yeah.
So there's, there's a huge amount of engagement and again, it is a representative process where we are all representatives. So there's open public comment all the way through. I, again, worried elected to be here to be a representative, not necessarily a straight up democracy.
I think it's something to consider. I think you can go back to the strategic surveys too. I mean, that was a pretty broad spread.
Yeah. I know there are surveys.
What, what, the problem we're trying to solve and then.
Yeah.
What kind of information we need to do that.
That's very good. And it's, and you, you bring up a very good point, Pam, about not necessarily looking for, what are we trying to avoid? What don't we want, but where are we trying to get to?
Yeah.
Matt has a good point on survey design. I would, I do want a lot of time for, for Avi too. Are you on for a budget update before we?
Our update is we have no update.
Ah, perfect.
Prepare yourself for June seven.
God, no.
Cause that is all we'll be talking. What he's trying to do is reconcile the end of this year. Um, and then turn over the new year. So once he can finish all of his reporting, we'll be able to know with greater certainty some of the TA numbers and and things like that. So we're just not quite there yet. Is that a fair way to put it?
Actually, I just got a big state report off my plate uh today, so I'm uh going.
Soon as you get home.
This meeting on our forecasting.
We were talking about it and I was being like, well, now I need to make some decisions and I was being a little impatient. And then we were thinking, it's actually not a big deal because it probably is better served because we can do it as a primer.
Okay.
And just kind of take through, this is the budget, this is the basic process, kind of our high level bullet points. And then as he goes through the year and review and where we're at, they can.
Okay.
They can kind of get a.
So that is the preparation.
Yeah, the other thing I would just say, because I know Pam and I have talked about this a bunch, is that typically we would do a budget to actual forecast. Uh, in the fall, prior to the budget season and then a true up at the end of the year. Um, we haven't really done the mid-year other than just updates, big picture. I know there's been questions about like, how's that going? Certainly as we went through the budget process and a lot of communities do that type of reporting. You know, so that's something I think we're going to be looking at what we can do next year to just get that on a reasonable schedule. In truth, I think this past year has been coming out of a kind of accounting hell from COVID. And at the one point, however many six, eight million dollars of COVID spending and all the journaling that's been done. So that's behind us now, which is great primarily. Um, and it just allows us to get back to more of the mechanics of, of, of being able to report the way we used to. So um, I'm looking forward to that. But either way, end of year is always when we do a, how did we end? Where are the pros? Where are the cons? And I'm excited to have that meeting uh in June.
And the other part I'm waiting for is just some final projections on utilities. Allison's projections on out of district and transportation. Because as we have it now, we may be able to talk about keeping the sixth grade language teacher in place. Um, probably about thirty five thousand dollars to do that. But I'm not comfortable making any recommendations because there's still so many things up in the air.
Yeah.
We're also trying to prepare and we, we're in the hiring process and bringing people on to solve the math issue and making sure. We are proactive and have contingency plans if we prehire and have to deal with staffing glut. So we've got a lot of things up in the year. That's why he feels my like, I just need, I need to know. Um.
It's a good face.
But we're, we're making progress and I think we're feeling good about next year. I just offered the commentary before, you know, Ken, you guys have been incredibly supportive to everyone. People are exhausted and I don't even think they know how tired they are.
Yeah.
Um, so our productivity may not be as great as it has been in the past. So I think we're looking forward to a very festive spring. There's a lot, a lot of activities coming up. But people will get happy.
Field trip.
Not to have a meeting on June twenty first.
Productivity's probably been doubled, but the productivity and the things we're used to, it's been a lot.
Do we have, we're at the time where school committee comment? Does anybody else have comments to make before I make that closing words?
Yes.
As my.
Yeah, it's okay.
I do. I just want to thank you both. This is your last meeting. I've only been here a year, but I know that both of you have been here for much longer than me and I've appreciated learning from you. And I've appreciated everything that you guys have done for our district, our students, our community.
We're not moving away, so you know where to find us.
Not here on Tuesday nights.
We'll heckle you on the meetings.
Yes.
Hope you both might be able to come on the June seventh meeting. We're going to do the retiree recognition. Um, we've, that, that email worked perfectly. Sarah will be back to end the events. Um, and it'll just be a nice opportunity for everybody to celebrate what you guys have accomplished and time for support.
Is that about the beginning? We've had to stare the whole time. It's right after Avi at the end.
It's going to take place during school committee comments.
Yeah, so um.
Thank you both.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
And it kind of in, in line with that, one thing I do have to point out and Eric and Eric and Matt or, no, I'm sorry, Chris and Matt. There is the Manchester Memorial School, the twenty seventh. At eight forty five, there's a memorial school, kind of in keeping with parity principles, there's the Memorial Day Ceremony that. Um, Julian Seaman had invited, I'm going to be attending that, but if either of you two gentlemen would be.
She invited all of us.
Okay, good.
Everyone invited all of us.
Good. That is a great thing.
Friday to twenty seventh, right?
Yeah. And I, I, I'm still hoping I can come crash the Essex Elementary Saturday whenever it starts, if it does.
Memorial's always done one because of the naming of the school as a memorial school.
Yeah.
And Essex just hasn't had one in the past. But there's, that might be one of those things that are just culturally.
Yeah, exactly.
Between the two buildings.
Yeah.
Just like they had the, they used to do the crossing of the pond.
Yeah.
Have you seen the pond? Not, yes, we don't do it anymore. It got me, fell in the first year.
Can we not end this meeting on all the things we don't do at Essex Elementary?
No, no, I was saying, there, there are, there are still going to be some little gems that are just traditions of those environments. And maybe not necessary to replicate.
Before we spin out too far, Jake, any comments from your end school committee? It's been a good first meeting for.
I'm good. Thank you so much. And and can I particularly appreciate uh working with you on uh, on the various committees? And but particularly the Essex Playground and the strategic planning. So thank you for your time and and efforts here.
That's going to be my engagement is the playground, going over and using the swings. Um, I guess we're, we're coming to an end. We're getting punchy, so I just want to, I guess, close with a couple, with a couple of things I, very briefly. I just want to thank everybody and I'll do this on behalf of, of Eric and um, and Sarah as well. Just want to say thank you for the, the privilege to be able to serve the, the MRSD community and work with everybody here. I, I know I joined as a learning experience um and I've learned tremendous amount. Um, quite frankly, it's, it's really neat to be part of something where there's just such a core focus, like here it's student at the center. And really allowing everybody to reach their fullest, kind of to grow and learn to their fullest point and all and service the community. So it's been really, it's been really fun. We're not going anywhere and thank you all for what you're doing. And continuing on with all the fun that we have planned. I have this heartbreak that I'm not going to be part of it, so.
Yeah, thank you guys. It's been a great experience.
Yeah. So any, I guess, without further ado, do I have a motion to close?
Salute.